All right. Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for taking time out from March Madness to do a little Planning Commission work. I'm going to call this March 21st, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. Let's start out with roll call. Mike Bresko.
Here.
Sayed Sepavian.
Here.
Sudrani Sunkara.
Here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Ajay Chakrapani.
Here.
Hisham Elkawad. Hisham, we didn't test your sound. Are you OK there?
I'm here, yes.
Good. And I am Mark Bachman, and I'm here. Next, approval of this evening's agenda. Got a couple items on the agenda for this evening. Next step in our discussion is about critical areas update and some discussion about some process improvements. Anybody have any comments on the agenda? Nope. So we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next, approval of the minutes from March 7th. Any corrections for the March 7th meeting notes?
Nothing from my side.
OK.
I second them.
Usually I just blow through this. So since there's no corrections or comments, we'll call the meeting minutes approved. So next, we'll do public comment for non-agenda. That's three minutes per person, so I mentioned what's on the agenda for this evening. So anybody for non-agenda public comment? Go ahead, Mary, if you want to.
Hello. This is Mary Victor. I've been in Sammamish 20-plus years. So for non-agenda, I wanted to talk about something from stormwater. The city used the 1998 stormwater code for the areas like in Tamarack and Inglewood, where I live, that are historic plats that were actually developed before there was development code and before the county had discovered the word drainage. So that's why they need special consideration. And as part of the stormwater update, the city had to stop using the 1998 for small lots and the 2009 stormwater code for larger lots. And they had to go to the new King County 2016 code. But even in the 1998 code, there was something called, excuse me, critical drainage area. I call it a hook in the code because it was something that you could do special stuff with, but there hadn't been any code written and no maps to define what those areas were. So I brought it up in April 2016, and by the end of the year, right at December, when they weren't going to pass it, they finally passed it. And what that did is it took like this map, which is a landslide hazard drainage map, and a landslide hazard drains to area, which is not a critical area, so it's the yellow and the orange. And they said, all those areas are pretty much, pretty important. So they took it and they combined it into what's called the critical drainage areas. So the critical drainage areas are just kind of orange, like the landslide and the landslide hazard drains to. And I think if you do a one-to-one mapping, they're the same. And then they also wrote in the code that said, if you're in a landslide hazard drainage to, it's just like you're in a landslide hazard because it could be. And then they also said that if there's any conflict with the map, the city has the right to say whether it really should be mapped or not. So we have this before us. It took quite a number of years to get to. They updated some of the stuff in 2017, 2019 for more stormwater code changes that were called stormwater code amendments, and we were able to create this area. The other thing that happened is Beaver Lake and Pine Lake also deserve special protection because of phosphorus. So these blue areas are around the lake. Now, they're different from these areas because these are like 10% slope or less, usually about 5%. And these areas can be almost a near cliff to 15% or more. So we were able to do this before. And I think when we're thinking about the topic tonight, we need to think about this for mapping and definitions because we've already done it in the city and it's very useful. The other thing that is a drains to area that isn't a critical area is these purple slashed lines. It's called erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies. They had done a pilot program so they could have large development there, and then they removed it in 2017. Now they're thinking about getting rid of it, and I'm not sure about getting rid of it because I think it's useful as put it is in this area that this is like, these are the areas of concern. Some of them are critical areas, some of them are just above critical areas, and that's really where we need to start worrying. So if you're thinking about buffers or setbacks, I think we need to have a consolidated map of all the drains to area, which are also as important as the critical areas. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. James?
James Eastman, Sammamish, Washington. Oh, Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway. I'm sure everyone tunes in to the city council meetings, so if I sound like a broken record, I'm sorry. But I did make public comment there the other night. I want to expand upon that, but it's stuff that I like to see also talked about here in the Planning Commission. Number one, with the TDRs, we talk about the Emerald Necklace. I want to confirm that that is an actual trail. I think that'd be awesome if we built it. But with that being said, we need to make sure that we're getting easements for a trail to be built within the Emerald Necklace and we're not just getting land. And we think that we have an easement in 20 years down the road. When we go to build the trail, there's no easement. So I don't know. Maybe there is, maybe there isn't, but I'd like to hear that talked about. And we could use that same process to really get other easements for other trails or public amenities based on whatever the community desires. I think it'd be a powerful tool if we design it right. But we are conflicted. One of those conflicts is gross versus net zoning. Haven't heard it talked about. We don't like talking about it because it's not a popular subject, but with TDRs, we're saying, hey, we have this awesome resource that is amazing public resource of public benefit. It's a critical area, and we need to protect them, so we need the TDR process. Lennar says, hey, that's great, you know? Let's do an exchange of value. Well, when that value is assigned to that piece of land to transfer the density into town center, into neighborhood center, or wherever, it's assigned to $0 value because it's a critical area. We use net density in Sammamish, not gross. King County uses gross. All that land along the 202 coming in, that's gross. That includes all the critical areas. They also double it. So it's a totally different program for those guys bringing their TDRs in versus a Sammamish resident who has them. So I don't know if there's an easy answer, but I think we should talk about it. And on King County's website, it does go through the history of the TDR process. At one time, they also used net instead of gross, and they said that it did not work and that gross density was the only way to get the program running. And we also seem to be conflicted with these critical area expansions that we're looking There's a scarce amount of land left in the city, and we are wanting middle housing, but then we have critical areas we want to extend some of these regulations. Well, gross density still protects critical areas, but it also builds middle housing because now you have more density to put on your buildable area, so it promotes middle housing and not large single-family residences. So I'd like to hear those come up, at least in some of these conversations. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
I have Exhibit 1 for the Planning Commission. I'm Mark Cross, and I live at 247 208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. I read the packet for tonight. I've been encouraged by the direction both the council and the Planning Commission have taken on environmental issues and town center. It's 20 years ago that I started on the city council in 2004. And one of the first meetings, we were going through the zoning code, and I was the one that identified that in the zone that we're in, sitting here tonight, that the code that we adopted from King County in the very early stages of the cityhood allowed 2,000 chickens per lot. And we were quickly to made that change because it was a practical thing to do. But that's how quickly we were changing from an agricultural area to residential. Tonight, I really wanted to talk about best available science. The best available science that's described in here is really looking at the natural systems, wetlands, streams, lakes, water quality. As a person who's worked as a city planner and utilities and planning departments for the last 40 years in the region, I think that one of the key things we need to add to best available science, as is defined in your documents tonight, is the idea of understanding carefully the storm drainage detention and the storm drainage system that we have in the city and how it interacts with the natural system. Best available science would actually include knowing more about the ponds. Where are they? Are some of them big enough where they could be reforested because they don't really receive water anymore? Or other ones need to have the outflows adjusted so that they flow the correct amount of water as we understand it and need it today? So there's a lot of good base-level civil engineering that needs to happen that would include helping us with understanding what we can do with best available science to enhance our environment long-term, both in town center and the rest of the city. The second thing I wanted to do was to provide you with a photograph of a development in my neighborhood up on the hillside. And this is in a lot that was steep slope. Previously, it had been an extra lot that somebody used for septic and that didn't need anymore, apparently, because there was sewer to another part of our neighborhood. And you can see that they started into development with every single permit, with every single condition that the city requires in engineering and architecture and tree retention. And what you have in front of you is what it looks like three years later. It first violated the tree protection part of it and later just found that they couldn't complete the lot because they really hadn't thought through how they were going to do it. So what I'm hoping is that your recommendations to council will also include some language about follow-through with the codes and perhaps require bonding when people are developing on steep lots and in hazardous areas, so the city has some leverage to get compliance with its codes. Whether they're good or not, they need to be enforced, and right now, obvious they don't have some enforcement tools that are needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, and thanks for your time and service to the city. OK, do we have anybody online for non-agenda comments?
We currently have one, excuse me, we currently have one hand raised for comment. Mr. Stigney, I'll go ahead and promote you. If you are calling in by phone and have pre-registered to comment, please press star nine to raise your hand, and you will be added to the list.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and former mayor and council member Mark Cross. Good to see you tonight, the other public commenters. And Kelly Hildy, we'll miss you. Have talked a lot to you over the years. Good luck in Mercer Island. Say hi to Jesse Bond and Jeff Thomas for me. I want to talk a little bit about something David Pyle mentioned at the Town Center Open House and then at a recent meeting. And it ties together with what I've been working on is the range of quantified housing needs that my opinion has shared. I appreciated at the Town Center Open House when David mentioned that he's been not waiting, but he's been looking for quantified numbers from me and how those were arrived at. Also, I appreciated his comment about how he wanted the growth target to fit in a neat box, but it's squishy. It does not do that. Housing needs in a community mix those concepts. So I've been in residential real estate over 40 years. Houses are appraised by a standard form that has factors that are consistent. There's usually 20 to 30 factors appraisers use. But you order 10 different appraisals, which you'd never do, their numbers are 10 to 20% wider more. Why? Discretion, interpretation. So they have the same factors that are solid, but their adjustments on each is up to them. So I was a little bit blind to the reality that I am an absolute master at getting a range of value right for housing. I applied all those techniques and all my knowledge of city council meetings to come up with the range in the documents that I've turned in that is a bottom-up range. But what I want to say now is I would welcome talking to each of you about what were the 15 or 20 factors that now are precisely quantified, of which there's no debate on the topics, but what they mean to each of you is not the same thing. So I think as a community, we need to figure that out because there's a real opportunity to meet local needs if we can come up with a legislative range that informed people who study all the topics agree to. And the numbers that I'm proposing for the town center, I believe, are well below the low end of any threshold and can be done for less traffic than are currently allowed. Anyway, I don't have enough time to go into detail, but if you want to sit down and meet and talk about it, all of my recommendations are based on bottom-up interpretation of quantified facts, not top-down. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thanks, Paul. Evan, do we have anybody else?
We have one more pre-registered commenter. I will go ahead and allow them to speak. Mr. Molson, I believe you have to unmute on your end. Go ahead and begin if you are ready. Mr. Molson, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
OK. My name is Steve Molson, and I live at 2611 200th Avenue Southeast in Sammamish. I've been a resident for about 28 years. I wanted to provide some input on a section of the code that has come up that I've been working with the planning director, David Pyle, and also a couple of the staff members to try to understand what we could do to get it modified because it doesn't seem to work for, it doesn't seem to fit the situation we're in. And I think we're getting caught in a larger picture of what this code was intended to do. The situation is that we have five and a half acres, but below, we have three acres that we were intending to do a short plat on, and there was a short plat moratorium. So my daughter and son-in-law went ahead and applied for a single-family permit, and in that building permit application, the site has got a number of overlays on top of it, erosion, landslides, so on and so forth. And I'm in the development business, have been for 35 years. And so we worked with the city. We worked with the peer reviewers that the city had on contract to establish that there were no sensitive areas or critical areas on this piece of property through doing soils investigations, doing topographical surveying, everything that was required for the peer reviewers to be able to make that determination. So once the short plat amendment got, or short plat moratorium went away, we went in for the, we were going to do a short plat. We wanted to create on the three acres.
My comment, 100%.
What's that?
Go ahead, Steve. That was just a technical difficulty.
Go ahead, Steve. We can hear you.
OK. So when we went back in for, we had submitted for a pre-development meeting in order to establish the process we're going to do a short plat. It was under that process that we found out that the director didn't have discretion because the overlay on a short plat application is not allowed to happen. And it was just kind of, it didn't make any sense because the building permit that was issued and the house is under construction will be, they'll be finishing that up here in the next month. It was constructed in the middle of the lot. The lot that we were trying to create was on the existing house that was going to be torn down, and we wanted to build another house. And we had established there was no critical areas, but because these overlays still existed, we weren't able to even apply for anything because it weren't even, I wasn't even able to show that we had already done the work to establish there were no critical areas. So in talking to Director Pyle, it was pretty clear that the code was not intended for this, but we were getting caught in a, basically a definition in the critical areas code. So my point tonight is, is I would like to, the process that I understood that we should go through is during the comprehensive plan, critical areas update, we should address this particular language and see if we can modify it so that it doesn't catch a situation like this, which it wasn't intended for, but because the language and because our situation fell within it, we were, yeah, we basically couldn't do anything. So I think the staff, I've submitted engineering reports. The city has all the information. Director Pyle has a very good understanding of it, and I guess I would like somehow him to be able to relay that or, and I'm giving public testimony, so whatever I can do to assist, I'm more than happy to. That's my, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
All right. Wow, that's a lot of public comment for the Planning Commission. This is pretty exciting. Let's move on to our business for this evening, the first item, old business, which is a continuation of our discussion about critical areas ordinance update. And I'm sure Jackie's going to maybe remind people, but I'll remind people that we did the first sort of half of this before, and now we're going to do a continuation with the second half. So I think you're going to introduce things, right, Jackie?
Yes, I will. Give me just one second to get my screen shared here. All righty. All right. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Jackie Bullio. I'm a managing analyst with Community Development, and I am joined tonight by Avril Beatty, who's our current Planning and Permit Center Manager, David Pyle, who's our Community Development Director, and Nell Lund from DCG Watershed. And then also online, we have Dan Nichol, who's part of our project team, also from The purpose of tonight's presentation is to review the rest of the proposed changes to the critical areas ordinance that have been identified by the project team. There are six types of critical areas, and we chose to split these six between our last meeting in January and tonight's meeting so that we can do a deeper dive into each one. And tonight, we'll be reviewing the proposed changes to habitat, conservation areas, and migration corridors, streams, and wetlands. A quick overview of our project timeline and where we are in the process. We met in October of 2023 during the joint Planning Commission and Council meeting where we presented the findings of the review and analysis portion of the project. Those reports are the best available science report, the existing conditions report, and the gap analysis. Those are all available on the project page of the website. And then at our last meeting in January, we reviewed the proposed changes to the first half of the critical area types, which was the critical aquifer-recharged areas, frequently flooded areas, and geologically hazardous areas. And then at tonight's meeting, we will go over the remainder of the proposed changes before we head to council in May to get their input. And then we will bring a draft to Planning Commission in June for a final review before your public hearing in July. And then we will go back to council for review before their public hearing in November. And then I also wanted to add that we are planning to host a booth at the farmer's market on May 15th for some public outreach on the project. And then just a quick reminder of the overall process. The city is required to review and update our critical areas ordinance to align with best available science. The December deadline, December 31st, is set by state law. We are running parallel to the comprehensive plan update, so our project teams are working closely together. And the update must follow the Department of Commerce's checklist and must be reviewed by the Department of Ecology and Department of Commerce. And then just one more quick refresher of the six critical area types, and we'll be focusing on the remaining three or the second half tonight. And we also have the areas of special focus that were chosen as being important to Sammamish, fish-bearing streams, accounting for climate change, preservation, and grant funding. And then, as you'll remember from last time, because our, the topic is pretty complex, we did decide to sort the proposed changes into three different categories to help guide the feedback that we'll be getting from you. The category one changes do not require feedback or action from the commission or council. They are minor updates, clarifications, or they are required changes. Those were included in the agenda packet, but for the sake of time, we will not be reviewing them in the presentation. The category two changes do need feedback or direction from our commission and council. They may not necessarily impact the project timeline, but they may need additional budget or further analysis in order to be included. And then category three changes, excuse me, will require direction to be added to future work plans as they would have an impact on stakeholders or require additional budget or staff time. So we do have a lot of information to get through, so we will try to be very efficient and mindful of the time. I know there's another topic on the agenda for tonight, too. So please remember that if you'd like more information on something that you see tonight, you can always reach out to staff, you can always reach out to me, and I can get you the right person, but we can follow up as needed. And I will go ahead and hand it over to Nell, and she can go ahead and dive into our critical area types.
OK. Is my mic working all right? Great. So just a reminder that my colleague or planning director, Dan Nichol, is on the line. And Dan, feel free to chime in as you see fit. So as Jackie mentioned, our three topics are going to be the habitat conservation areas and mitigation corridors, streams, and wetlands. And as we talk about these, it might be good to think about the fact that kind of managing all these things in concert does help improve climate change resiliency, and, you know, these areas interact in the landscape. But just an overview, the habitat conservation areas and the corridors are focused on, in the current code, on endangered and threatened species or sensitive species. Lakes, ponds, streams are also included in that category. We protect these areas to maintain our native plant and animal habitats and, you know, sustainable corridors for these animal populations to survive and thrive in our landscape. And the current protection is under that section of the code and in coordination with state and federal regulations such as the Endangered Species Act. Next slide, please. So our changes under category two here that were identified in the best available science review, the primary one here that we're starting with is just to ensure that our, the definition in the code of these areas is clear and aligns with the Washington Administrative Code, which spells out the option to list species and habitats of local importance. Currently, there isn't a itemized list like that in the code, and that's something that we'll workshop with the planning staff as we look at this update as a potential option. And then again, to manage these environments and give them sufficient protections, that's a tool that could be implemented. And then the current definition of wildlife habitat corridor in the code is a bit convoluted. I've had to apply it myself on some projects and found it a little bit odd to apply. It excludes seasonal streams as a consideration as you look at your stream and wetlands connectivity that might target a particular property or project for inclusion of a corridor. So that's definitely something that we want to revisit in this update. So that's definitely something that we want to revisit in this update. And then it's important to acknowledge that, you know, these corridors are not just protected critical areas and their buffers, but also open space and park space and just forested patches throughout the city, and those, those have important functions and values for a variety of species, including our migratory birds. Next slide. So the intention of revising the regulations to provide additional standards for best management near these habitat conservation areas is to include some minimization measures into sort of the project review sequencing, similar to what's presently in the code for wetlands. And then, let's see, regulating migration corridors between various habitats that, that can just, the intent there is to look more broadly at connectivity in the landscape beyond the protected critical areas and their buffers, to see where those upland areas could be potentially targeted for preservation to facilitate those corridor connections. And, and then updating the regulations, we can also look at different tools to protect and manage these corridors, such as, you know, preservation with perhaps a notice on title, critical area fencing and signage to alert people to the presence of these areas and their, their necessary stewardship. And then project-specific review should also consider how corridor boundaries could be modified to encourage connectivity. So for example, if there's a new development, it should be part of the planning process to see if there's a stand of intact native vegetation that maybe is a good candidate for preservation for a corridor. Next slide, please. Those are, those are the category two options that we're workshopping with the planning department. To go another step, obvious valuable planning tool would be additional mapping, and that would require more GIS analysis, some spatial modeling with some expert review by, you know, wildlife biologists or other professionals that can identify sort of the priority habitats and corridors that could be identified, mapped, and potentially targeted for, you know, consideration in parcel-specific and, and broader city planning. And then, you know, if, if the city gets to that point with their mapping, it would be great to see that as a layer in the interactive GIS mapping tool online. That would really, making that information readily available would help people incorporate it into their decision-making. And of course, as we discussed in the previous meeting, like the other maps, we recommend that these be advisory-only. Next slide. So streams, as, as we're all familiar, you know, areas with bed and bank, water courses that convey, you know, our drainage through, from the plateau down to Lake Samamish and, and provide that valuable fish habitat. We protect them to maintain those habitats for both in-stream aquatic organisms, but also for the terrestrial wildlife that utilize those corridors, those riparian corridors. And, and these, these areas are also interacting, you know, with our, with our wetlands and our, and the karas to recharge and manage, recharge and release groundwater throughout, throughout the, the landscape. And they're currently protected through a stream typing system based on both flow conditions and fish presence or absence. And they're protected through buffering, which is intended to, you know, shade the stream channels and provide filtration of pollutants and buffer it from adjacent development, basically. Next slide. Okay. So before I dive into the proposed changes here, I thought it would be helpful to kind of give context of the main resource that we're referencing as we review stream regulations is the Department of Fish and Wildlife's riparian ecosystem publications from 2020 of their two volumes. Volume one is focused on an in-depth view of the best available science of the various functions and values that these ecosystems provide. They focus on, you know, specific stream processes, water quality functions, and habitat values. And then volume two is a guidance document intended to help local jurisdictions implement the best available science. They presented a tool in that that we'll cover at the end of this section here. But it's, we've had several meetings with Department of Fish and Wildlife staff over the, over the guidance and, the best available science and the guidance, pardon me. And they recognize that it needs to be sort of tailored and implemented on a jurisdiction specific basis. So we're working, we're just starting to workshop that process with the planning department. Next slide, please. Oh, no, I haven't gone through these yet, my apologies. So in light of that WDFW guidance, we were discussing possibly changing the naming in the critical areas regulations from streams to riparian areas as part of a more watershed-scale management approach. WDFW is really looking at these as ecosystems that need to be protected intact as opposed to just a stream and a buffer. So that's a consideration. And then we'll be looking at, in line with the guidance, the recommendations, we'll be looking for opportunities to facilitate either enhancement or restoration. One of those opportunities is looking at the code for piped water courses, seeing if it makes sense to add some specific criteria for daylighting that might encourage people to consider that. Based on riparian buffer approach, update modification regulations, that is a consistency item as we determine what the new standard, the classification and buffering approach is with, with the city planning. We'll just need to ensure that those modifications are consistent with, with those new provisions. And then to provide additional protections when critical area impacts are proposed on projects, we'll be looking at ways to require enhancement and, and do it in an incentivized fashion where, you know, buffer may be, may be able to be maintained at, at potentially a narrower width if, if it's enhanced. And, and then beyond requirements for enhancement, we also want to encourage voluntary restoration. Okay. So the, the first two items here are really just code details that we will look at for consistency with updates on the standard buffers. So for example, just as with wetland buffers, the standard buffer width presumes a densely vegetated native plant community. The same holds for WDFW's riparian buffer width recommendations. So we will need to reconcile the standard code requirements with modifications and, and sequencing considerations. And then providing additional development standards for legally non-conforming conditions is something that we plan to work through with the city planning department to make sure that we are giving property owners opportunities to, you know, still use their properties that contain these non-conforming structures and not be overly burdened by these best available science updates. So exactly what that will look like is, is not determined at this early sort of cookbook stage of the process, but it's, it's a key consideration. And, and then reasonable use criteria. This may be modified in the update to, to highlight review of mitigation of migration corridors and ensure that the habitat management plan requirement is implemented as it's applicable. Next slide, please. Again, the first two bullets are just detailing some of the details that we're looking at as we, pardon me, as we continue to update the best available science recommendations with the standard buffers, but also recognize that we don't want to unnecessarily bring properties into non-conformance that are not in that condition now. So that's something that we'll be reviewing as we look at land use management allowances for non-conforming uses, and that can be detailed as, as needed to, to make it practical to implement and useful for property owners. Let's see, consider whether WDFW riparian management zone guidance that suggests site potential tree height buffering should be used. This is the big one. So this is where the concerns about increasing non-conformance really stems from WDFW's best available science review, looking more holistically from that landscape management perspective at this resource, has really a big paradigm shift. So if their guidance were, was taken at face value, stream typing would no longer apply. All streams would be protected based on the soil, the mapped soil type on that property, and then the site potential tree height determined after 200 years of growth, projecting out 200 years of growth, the site potential tree height. The intent of that, as their, their best available science document says that that's based on trying to achieve full function for these systems to allow woody debris recruitment and geomorphic and fluvial processes to happen in the landscape. Obviously, that's, that's not at face value applicable to these urban environments, but the range for that is between 100 feet up to 231 feet. And WDFW recommends a minimum of 100 feet for all streams to protect water quality. That's the width at which 95% of pollutants are removed, based on their review of the science. So that's something that we'll be reviewing and working through, and it's, it's potentially a big change that needs to be put into practical context for City of Samamish. So as we review that, our focus is to, and this does align with the guidance from WDFW, is to focus on enhancement requirements and incentivizing restoration, to focus on habitat corridor connectivity and promoting that within the city, and then looking at practical ways to avoid, avoid expansion of non-conforming uses. Okay. Next slide, please. Did you want to jump in on any of that, Dan? Or did I hit all the points you, we, we intended?
Yeah, no, I think that, that hit on the points. If there's questions, I guess, I don't know if we want to pause for any questions there, or do you want to keep moving on to category three?
I'd, I'd suggest moving on to category three and trying to get through the whole thing and then run into conversation.
Seems like that's the trail we're on.
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay. So the future work plan items for streams are to, I feel like the, the primary one is to provide additional clarity on the process and determination to increase stream buffer widths in line with BAS. As part of the agency review, this is what we've encountered recently working with WDFW on this guidance, making sure that we're documenting our, our approach and thought processes as we apply this best available science specifically to Samamish. And if they have questions on that, sometimes additional documentation has, and back and forth has been necessary to come to understanding and agreement. There is of course the option to document rationale for deviating from best available science, if that is where the city lands. But so far, we have found that there's enough flexibility in the best available science itself in volume one, that we do have a variety of ways that we can demonstrate that we're applying that, that could work for the city. And then conducting GIS analysis to support the BAS review and buffering approach is something that we've done recently in some jurisdictions as part of this analysis. We can utilize their tool to map what the site potential tree height would look like in the landscape and compare that to different buffering scenarios for consideration and discussion. But that would be above and beyond our current scope. Okay, on to wetlands. City of Samamish has some really high-quality, high-value wetland systems, including bogs, which a lot of cities don't have. So it's a, I'm biased, but I think it's a cherished resource here. These are areas that are either saturated or seasonally or permanently inundated, where the groundwater supports specialized vegetation adapted to those hydrophilic conditions. We protect these areas with the functions and values of them, which are commonly recognized as water quality functions, hydrologic functions, and habitat functions. They also help protect our aquifers and our drinking water. They provide clean, cool water to our streams, and they provide habitat for fish and wildlife. And these areas are protected currently through the wetland classification system and then set buffer widths. Next slide. Okay. So proposed changes that we'd, we'd like you to be aware of for wetlands include that the best available sciences is clear that the standard buffer widths are based on the presumption that the buffers are vegetated with appropriate native plant species for our ecoregion. So we need to be clear on that in the language as we update the code. In terms of the habitat corridors, as, as I mentioned at the beginning, you know, there are obvious interactions between wetlands, streams, habitat corridors within the landscape. So we'll want to either cross-reference or update the code to be sure that that is clear within the wetland section, as well as the fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas section. And then we'll need to update, review the best available science for updating buffer modification options. The requirement that the standard buffer is vegetated changes how we look at buffer modification options, such as averaging or reduction, and we'll need to work through that. The current code does mention things like The current code does mention things like mitigation banking and in lieu fee, but it could also reference the credit debit tool, which is another ecology-developed best available science tool for determining compensatory mitigation. And then, as I mentioned, you have some bogs in City of Sammamish. I believe 12 bog systems are mapped throughout the city. They are highly sensitive to stormwater impacts and pH changes and have a unique plant community, so we want to be sure that you have robust regulations in place to protect those. Next slide. Oh, you've already got it. Let's see. So the wetland code for City of Sammamish still contains wetland management area and special district overlay code language that is really based on the 2004 Sammamish Basin Plan. It's older outdated language that's really been replaced by updates to the Washington State Department of Ecology's Wetland Rating System and concurrently the stormwater manual management practices and requirements. So we recommend bringing that up to date. And then the last consideration, which is really the core change here in the wetland section, is there is a buffer update recommended by ecology. As they've done in the past, they present a model ordinance and three options, two different potential ways to update the buffers while complying with best available science. The first option is the most flexible and, in our preliminary discussions, seems to be preferred by the planning director and planners in the group. It's, that particular option is based on wetland category, the habitat score, and then it requires minimization measures. I feel like I just misspoke, so if this doesn't make sense, let me know and I'll repeat. It's based on wetland category, habitat function score, and then when you have moderate to high habitat score, you need to provide a habitat corridor as part of your protection. And all projects, regardless of habitat score, need to apply minimization measures, such as avoiding having lights in the wetland, keeping pets and people out of the area, and those measures are already in the current code. Option two is identified as mid-range flexible. It gives you a variety of buffer widths that are based on a wetland category and habitat score and land use intensity. So high, moderate, low land use intensity, with residential use being moderate, commercial being high, as examples, parks and trails, as long as they don't have ball fields or other high-intensity uses, those are generally low. But your high end, as we go down the list from option one to option two, option one allows you to arrive at the narrowest possible buffer widths, whereas option two, the buffer widths get a little bit wider with, you know, fewer factors being considered. And then option three is strictly based on category, and it has the highest buffer widths. For example, under option two and three, I think the highest buffer width is 300 feet, whereas under option one, the highest potential buffer is 225. And again, that varies between, let's see, I can't quote the whole buffer table, but if you have specific questions, please let me know. Let's move on to the next slide. Oh, and yep, we did not have any additional work plan items identified at this time for wetlands. So I think that was it.
So I can just jump back on and remind everyone of what our next steps are. So we will be bringing these proposed changes to the city council for their input on May 7th. We are holding our farmers market booth on May 15th, and then we will be back in front of the planning commission for a final review in June. And then we can go ahead and pause here for questions. Just a reminder again, if there's anything that you think of after tonight that you'd like to reach out to us, my email address is on the screen. Please feel free to reach out with any questions.
Thanks for the presentation and the information. I'm going to suggest that we do this kind of, let's ask questions about each category. So let's start out with habitat conservation areas and migration corridors, back to the first category we talked about. Let's try to get that covered, and then we'll move kind of through it chunk by chunk. So let's start with that one. Questions, comments, so forth with habitat conservation areas and migration corridors. Ajay, you've got something?
Yes. Thank you. First of all, thanks a lot. Sorry I had to excuse myself for a break. Nothing what you said that made me do that, so don't worry about it. So I had a question on, when I first was going through the habitat conservation, as it were, throughout the document, there are lots of, at least I've read it a couple of times, where it said that the maps are supposed to be used as only advisory and not as a this one, right? And I assume that's because Mother Nature has a way of handling water and habitats and how they move and all of those things. So is that the reason why we are not specifically calling it out, or is there some other reason for that?
Well, David Pyle might have a comment on that, but part of it is the experience that the city has had, as I understand it, with some of the other maps for geo-hazards, for example, not being advisory, causing conflict with boots on the ground, present-day assessment following, you know, accepted best practices and scientific methodology. So we, part of it is often the scale at which these critical areas and features are mapped may not scale down appropriately to parcel-specific analysis, so we want to allow room for that.
Got it, got it, got it. I have two more questions, so let's go step by step. One is, in the question of how are mag habitat conservation areas and migration corridors currently protected? And it ends with such as snags and large woody debris. Let me read that sentence again. It basically says, "Management measures may include buffers, seasonal restrictions, habitat corridor, or conservation area establishment, and retention of habitat features such as snags and large woody debris." So is this large woody debris that we would normally put to call that as a conservation area, to demarcate that as a conservation area, or is this something that just comes along and we say, okay, this has become a good conservation area right now?
Yeah, so in projects I've worked on, we approach that kind of from both sides. Sometimes you have an existing habitat patch that already contains, you know, a complex multi-age forest canopy that's got snags and some large woody debris. Other times, a project site, they may have a critical area that they're protecting that's presently degraded, but they're having to cut down some trees on the property so they can salvage them and they can create snags and place woody debris.
Great, great that you said that you've seen this in the past, because my next question then is that, in your experience, have you seen that change where you said, okay, this is the thing, and then suddenly we get an El Nino, La Nino, weather year, the rain is pouring, the water finds a way to come through, and now what you had planned as that natural area is no longer dependable? I'm not saying that it's completely blown away, but I'm like, it's not dependable. Have you seen that in the past? Should we account for that, is what I'm asking. And let me go back a little bit on today. The reason I'm saying that is because we are using the maps as just an advisory role to tell us that this is the thing. If this also becomes, I'm a mathematician, so let me tell you in terms of this, that's a factor of X, right? We have to compute that. We don't know where it'll land. If this also becomes another Y, then we have too many variables in the equation now, suddenly. So how do we handle that? How do we advise to say, yeah, this is good, we don't have, we'd like to go with option one? I was thinking all the way, let's go with option one in telling this thing, but then as these came up, I'm no longer sure about that. So how do I answer that? Help me.
If I don't fully address your question, others feel free to step in. I guess I thought about your question initially as habitat, these protected critical areas and habitat features changing over time in the landscape, which they certainly do. And sometimes at more dynamic sites, we have things like, you know, beaver can come in and completely change the hydrology and maybe, you know, a bunch of plants die off, and those sorts of dynamics certainly can occur. But those areas, you know, that's part of allowing a dynamic natural process to take place, and that can still have value. In terms of the different buffer options, I think that there are two things to consider with the habitat corridor requirement under option one. One, it overlaps with other goals for management of other critical areas such as streams and for improving resiliency of these interacting ecosystems in the landscape. And two, it allows you to get individual property owners for their projects to get lower buffer widths, which, let's be honest, that's what everyone wants when they're looking at their own project.
Okay, okay. So to suit my concern, yes, go ahead, David.
I was going to add into that, that, so to address part of your concern, it's really mathematicians that help us out. Quantitative ecologists partner with habitat biologists and habitat ecologists and identify what constitutes habitat and features and study that in the landscape, then they're able to identify how to replicate that. So when we, you know, watershed, or a DCG watershed, I guess now, has worked on many projects that I've been part of, not just in Sammamish but around the region, where they've, their designers who work with Nell actually replicate habitat because of some of the studies that have been done by teams of quantitative ecologists and habitat biologists. And then they're able to then replicate that in order to help propagate a certain species or a certain condition through design. And the designs do at times not always result in the outcome immediately, but in the long term, they're usually very successful.
Got it. As a quant math guy, I love your answer. Let's go to slide 10, if you can. And that's my last question on this. Yeah, so this was the question. Provide additional maps to illustrate the relationship between movement of wildlife and locations of habitat. The question I had at that is that how does this trigger in? Do you have to actually see wildlife moving through that area? Do you, if somebody creates something which moves the wildlife in a different way, or if there was like a couple of accidents which happen with wildlife, wildlife is, they're going to be smart enough to not take that path, and if they move it, they come this way, where is the trigger? How do we know that, that this is happening?
Yeah, so this type of mapping analysis that I'm recommending for a future work plan is more of a planning tool. I'm going to quote Avril here, because to a certain extent, if you build it, they'll come. And wildlife are going to try and avoid hazards as they move through the landscape to access the resources that they need for their lifecycle. So, you know, GIS analysis gives us an opportunity to really analyze where those pockets of valuable habitat are and even establish priorities for areas that, you know, are maybe good to target for restoration and preservation.
That's a great answer, because I've heard that not only from you, coming from you, but also from people in the national parks who tell us that if you build a walk pathway for, let us say, wolves or other animals, they will find a way to get to that, and then they'll use that as it comes. So that's, so we would do that, and then that's just something that we will get to see, and then we will know that, okay, this is an additional map that has come because we have created another movement path for the wildlife. And the locations of the habitat will obviously move along with that and so on and so forth. Am I right in that assumption?
I did it the wrong way. Yeah, I think that's a good, accurate statement. We're just looking at tools, right, to identify opportunities and to be thoughtful and strategic as the city grows. And, you know, we value these habitats in the city, and so this is a tool to help us ensure that it's being considered in planning decisions.
Got it, got it.
It also helps with planning staff and making permit decisions and with park staff or other staff who might be doing restoration work, because it helps us identify where we have character or features or texture or structure that we might want to protect in order to maintain habitat, but it also identifies where there are areas that we want to improve to connect the other patches that we have.
Great, great. That's great, because he read my mind. I have a question on that, but I'm actually going to hold that question.
Can we move on to some others? So John, do you have anything?
Yeah, a couple of things. And just point out, the converse is also true to the, if you build it, they will come. If you build it in the way of a major social trail, they'll go through it. I've seen a couple of projects near schools that cut off social trails, and it wasn't Keeping in the back of my mind that there's a strong, often a strong relationship between these habitat areas and critical areas for other reasons, streams, wetlands, whatever. I think that helps put it in some perspective. An easy way to think of it in my simple mind is fish versus mammals. So easier to think about protecting and buffering those areas around streams and wetlands and stuff for fish and frogs. But in my neighborhood, which isn't too unusual, I don't think, the deer, bobcats, even cougars, coyotes, raccoons, they all get around just pretty well, fine, walk down the middle of the street sometimes. So having the habitat corridors as an advisory connection, I think, is pretty important, that we don't add another layer that creates unintended consequences. Okay, the stream stuff, that's the next section, and I'll come back to the GIS stuff later. So that's all.
Mike?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I'm going to start a little bit more broadly for a second if I can. And just in terms of philosophy, as you're working through, you know, making the adjustments and the updates, and I'll preface this by saying, I'm actually very like environmentally focused, but also recognize the challenges of being located within the growth management boundary and not outside of that. So there's a balance between protecting the environment and being where we're at, which is an area that is designated for growth, not for, you know, non-growth or really minimal growth. The second broad comment is that the best available science is really focused on what is absolutely best for the environment. It should be, right? But that also brings challenges around what kind of development and that whole balance again. And I'll bring that to a specific comment here or there, but I guess the guidance I would provide is that there are things that are absolutely going to be required, you know, that are basically, you know, pushed on us, and we should recognize that and make adjustments. For things that we're considering that would be nice, I would take a more high bar before putting in additional burdens and regulations. And I personally hate to say that, but I think it's kind of necessary for where we're living. So those are broad and general comments. For the habitat conservation and mitigation corridors, one way that I was thinking through this is that, and was struggling, and you don't have to answer this right now, but in terms of your thinking, it really talked about the protected areas are especially for endangered species, and then, you know, sort of the other types of species that, you know, are threatened or sensitive. So that's a pretty clear definition. It's not every raccoon- It's not every raccoon that walks around, of which there, as John noted, there's a lot of them. And so, you know, I think that's an important distinction, is that the corridors are for those defined species and not for all the deer and raccoons that walk down John Street. And so keep that in mind. And then, let's see. The, I've got one or two other things. The, oh, this is a question, actually, I wouldn't mind having answered. It was unclear to me, there's a definition of habitat corridor could be revised to be more inclusive of landscape scale planning. What's landscape scale planning? And what would, how would that impact the way the, you know, the regulations and all get adjusted?
Sorry, I'm not controlling my microphone properly. When I said landscape scale, it would have been more correct to say watershed scale, so I probably misspoke there. But water, when you're managing from a watershed perspective, you're looking at things like how much impervious surface area do you have within your watershed, and how is that impacting your dynamics? So, the two are interrelated, but I think I lost track of your question, if you wouldn't mind.
I was trying to understand, when we talk about defining habitat corridors to be more inclusive of landscape scale planning, so how does, what does that exactly mean?
Sure. So, a specific example would be that the current WDFW best available science recommends protecting streams, all streams regardless of their type, whether they're fish-bearing or non-fish-bearing, from the priorities of water quality protection and habitat and maintaining sufficient area for landscape processes that are common to streams like woody, large woody debris recruitment to occur. So, that is what that's based on.
Okay. And then if the habitat conservation or the mitigation corridor is not in a stream or a boundary around a stream, does that change that?
Oh.
Or most of the habitat conservation area is going to include streams? I wouldn't have thought so, but...
Right. So, that is included in the list, and actually, I realize I didn't complete my example, which was that the current wildlife corridor definition in the code requires you to have a wetland that has a high habitat score. It's very convoluted, so I'm not going to quote it exactly.
I see.
But you need to have a type F or a type NP, so a fish-bearing or a non-fish-bearing perennial stream within a certain distance. So these features need to be within, I think, 200 feet of each other within your site or adjacent to your site. And so it excludes seasonal streams, which doesn't really align with the current best available science from WDFW, which looks at all streams more holistically. Does that make sense?
Enough to make me say, I don't have a follow-up question on that. You know, the complexity and all that. So that's fine for right now. I mean, really.
I think one way to put it is, we took a step backwards with our last critical areas update with regard to habitat. And we recognize that the rules that were put into place are not achieving what we as a community would like to achieve. So there is an opportunity in front of us to take a bigger look at what we want to do with habitat in the city. And this feedback that you're giving us tonight on this is really great. I mean, I really appreciate the, what is, what are we trying to provide habitat for? You know, how do you, not adding additional regulation that's overly restrictive, that we should only do allowed development, all those things. But, you know, the classic one for me that really stood out is in terms of patches and matrices, so thinking about how patches out there fit in. And amphibians are really sort of the canary, the canary in the coalmine of habitat, because the way in which reproduction occurs at the cycle that it happens, if there isn't a cross landscape connection between aquatic habitat patches, then amphibians will ultimately lose the genetic input that's necessary for them to continue breeding because of the rapid cycle of breeding that they go through. So, it's not just streams and wetlands, but there's also that upland component by which species interact with each other from their primary habitat patches.
Okay. That's, I have one other quick comment, which is, it seems to me, this is category three, that the corridor maps would be an essential planning tool.
Yeah.
They just, one picture's worth a thousand words. Thank you.
I agree. If I could speak briefly to your earlier comment about the species of local importance list and your concerns about that, the common reference that is reviewed and discussed in looking at that line item would be the Department of Fish and Wildlife's publication of priority habitats and species. So that includes state and federally listed species as well as just regionally important species. And there are no raccoons in there.
So, do you have any?
I have 10 questions. I'm just kidding, I only have one. I'm learning a lot, and this is new to me, so thank you so much. So, do we have any existing maps for these potential habitats, or is that a new thing that we're requesting?
The city has had some mapping in the past, and King County has some mapping.
There are several maps that have existed in the past that would need to be contrasted and assessed, and there would then need to be some additional remotes. There's more data now than there used to be. Remote sensing tools are far better. And we are also doing things like canopy assessments, which are helpful as well, vegetation cover type, right? Whether it's a bare soil, lawn, a shrub, or a tree.
Or a bog.
We have a bog. We have that type of information now. So we would hope that going forward, and the city council is willing to fund some additional mapping exercises whereby we take into account existing maps that are of various quality, and then use new data and basically cobble it all together and come up with a new map that is the best, the best...
Current, right? Yeah.
The best current.
Are these old maps, kind of?
They are older maps, the ones that we have. And the scale of the maps, especially the county maps, is really on more of a regional scale. So it's not really meant to be used at a parcel level.
Got you. Thank you, David. One more question. So, you look like a more environmentalist, so I know option one is the easiest. What would be your personal choice? You don't have to answer if you don't want to, but...
Well, the Washington State Department of Ecology is not hiding their opinion. They say that option one is their preferred method, and I understand why, and I would agree with that assessment.
Thank you.
Sayad?
Before getting to my question, I want to kind of follow up on a question that A.J. asked, and that was about mapping. Where do you get all this information? Is that based on some surveys as far as the environmental issues, as far as the conservation areas and all that? Where do you get that data from?
I did it again. I'm not a GIS specialist, but we do have some in our office, so I'm...
Well, GIS role is to actually draw based on the information that they feed into the GIS system.
Right.
The raw data, where is that coming from?
Oh, I apologize.
That's right.
So, the folks that do that mapping and work with that are familiar with pulling information from various resources. There are some public resources online, county, some of the Department of Natural Resources, other institutions that we commonly look to have some data. We also have, and I'm sure we're not alone in this capacity, we have drone pilots that can, you know, capture current information that can be utilized in GIS to do new assessments for canopy cover or, you know, vegetation patches.
Also, Mike asked a question, not asked a question, but made a comment about that they, let's remind ourselves that the conservation area in the urban growth versus non-urban growth, which is rural areas, is that actually exist? There is a two different plan. One is the mandated for urban growth boundary area and one for the rural areas as far as the conservation districts and conservation plans?
Well, that's something that would need to be determined on your, at a local level. You know, what's the best fit for your community and those two different sort of zoning designations?
I think also, what I got out of Commissioner Bresko's, or Vice Chair Bresko's question and comment was that there are, there is a different expectation for cities and entities and, or, you know, communities in the urban growth area where there is, under the Growth Management Act, an expectation that a certain level of growth occur. There's a different type of planning that happens, different densities, different requirements for infrastructure, all the things that go along with growth, than there is on the other side of the line out in the rural King County areas. And therefore, we need to take into account when we are considering regulations, right sizing those regulations when we're dealing with other competing priorities. Whereas in the county, there might be more of a priority for that rural feel, protecting certain features, large stands of timber, things like that, versus the urban growth area, we're trying to find a way to protect as much of the natural resource as we can, while also still at the same time, not completely halting growth and growing in the right way. If that...
Okay, my own question. Typical habitat conservation plan, when you put together, aren't we supposed to list goals and objectives and then tie the tasks that you share with us as far as what are we going to do here and there to those goals? I did some Googling, and I came up with a number of them. Let me give you an example. Is restoring habitats, aiding recovery of sensitive species, restoring natural and geographic process and hydrological issues, mitigating impact on biological resources? Is there, does it make a sense to list that and then use that as a basis to come up with the task and the things that we need to do?
That's something that we can workshop with the planning department. You make me think of how in the current wetland section, there are...
I didn't see any list of goals.
I'm sorry?
I didn't see the list of goals, goals of the conservation plan. There's not listing of those goals, that's my question.
No. Maybe I misunderstood, but when you spoke, it made me think of incentivizing and prioritizing. So, you could list out what the priorities are for the city in order of preference for applicants to consider as they apply these to their project.
So, when thinking about critical areas rules, it's not necessarily a habitat restoration plan or a habitat enhancement plan per se. What instead we're doing is, with the comprehensive plan, we're setting goals, right? That's where our policy language would be, the part you're talking about now. So we are working with the comprehensive plan team with this project to also insert policy language in the comprehensive plan related to what our goals as a community are for habitat.
That is the answer.
Then, down in the code section, is where that's actually implemented. Aside from the city investing in restoration on our own, when development comes in, there are things that are required of a development action to implement or actualize the vision of the plan, and then over time, we monitor that to make sure that it's successful.
Lot of references made to the connectivity. I know the connectivity when it comes to the transportation and traffic, but you're not, you don't mean connectivity in this regard. You're talking about connectivity among the different items in the environmental world. So can you, can you give us an example of connectivity that we need to maintain?
Sure. So, a break in a wildlife habitat corridor varies by species trying to cross that break, right? As we know, deer will cross roads, but it does present a hazard. So, an intact corridor is, I would say, devoid of those sorts of hazards, and also can be crossed by a more diverse community of species, like frogs, for example, amphibians would be hindered by a road. So it would be an intact native environment, native plant environment that wildlife could cross without being hindered by human use, human land uses. Does that make sense? I felt like I didn't.
That's right. Is that, let's say, what would a good example, like, connectivity between a wetland and a stream? Is that, is that an example of connectivity you're talking about?
Yeah. So, a lot of species, I mean, they may need, like amphibians, for example, they need that ponded wetland environment for their reproduction, but then for foraging and dispersal, and they need the surrounding upland or terrestrial habitat.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Yep.
I just have one comment, so, and it's going to echo what Mike said, so I'll try to keep it short. But I do think this conversation, you know, feels a little one-sided. It's easy to say, yes, we should do everything on the list, but it feels a little one-sided, and I just would say that, in my opinion, I think we as a commission and the city council as well, have an obligation to represent and think about everybody in Sammish. And so we need to also consider, as part of the discussion, or as we move forward, figure out a way to consider what the on-the-ground implications of some of this might look like, because it's easy to say, we're gonna, I'm going to make something up, right, but we're going to increase the buffer and say that you can't build a fence in that zone, and that sounds awesome, right? More wildlife, more trees, everybody's happy. Except that if somebody's backyard of the house that they're going to build is in that area, and they want to build a fence to have their kids be able to play outside safely, and all of a sudden, we've changed that, there's a balance that needs to be part of this. And I think most people have a strong passion for improving the conditions in the community to protect wildlife, but we can't have a successful outcome if our conversation doesn't include those other things that could, just like one of the commentators earlier, sort of the unintended consequences that can happen. That needs to be part of the conversation, or we'll end up not realizing all those unintended consequences, just make something that doesn't really function, just like, you know, we have sometimes now. So I just encourage that we not get caught up in our passion for the environment so much that we create something that has unintended consequences. Okay, let's move on to streams. I liked going down the line, so I'm going to keep doing that. So, John, do you have anything, questions on the stream section?
On the, in the stream section, in reference to buffers, and I think you and David have kind of already answered this, that the criteria for the buffer width is not set in stone, that there's averaging in different, there's different flexibilities. Just right to go back to Mark and Mike's points around balance. So, maybe describe just very quickly again what the thought process was around tree heights and stream buffers? Well, I understand, you know, cooling water, stuff like that, but in terms of how we would manage it and regulate it?
Yeah, that's something that we're in the early stages of diving into the details of and workshopping with the city planning department, so we don't, we don't have more concrete feedback on direction yet, it's still kind of high level. But we recognize that, and David mentioned early on in the discussion, when we alerted him to the recommended increase in buffers, that, you know, we need to keep this in a context that's practical in the urban environment, and, you know, particularly, you know, properties that have already been subdivided and have a designated national growth protection easement. The current code has some allowances for considering that as you apply the current, you know, the current buffer widths, and I think we'll be looking at kind of continuing that sort of... And I think we'll be looking at kind of continuing that sort of approach. But the, yeah, we, okay, I'm trying to think of something useful to include in my answer. As we're considering the best available science on how to apply it, we are focused on trying to reduce, trying to minimize any increases, avoid throwing properties into non-conformity that are not presently, and requiring enhancement where we can to get a net benefit from the existing protected areas.
Thank you.
Ajay?
Sorry, this confusion with the mic continues. So I had just two questions on this. First thing is that on your how are streams defined, what kind of impact does climate change have on this? Because if it is, if the waters are getting hot, and let me get to a specific point on that, the type NP stream that you have, which is what they use for, let's call it transit as they're moving, as the fish are moving, if they start to avoid that because it's getting too hot for them, or if it is not the ideal one, does that change anything in how we define streams? And how do we do that? Is this, again, you're going to use some volunteers to count the fish that pass by to know that, or how do we even tell that this is now an NP stream and not, or not an NP stream anymore?
That's a good question. So the Washington State Department of Ecology actually has online a tool called the Water Quality Atlas, and they, they monitor many streams throughout our region, and they monitor them for what we call TMDLs, Total Maximum Daily Load Water Quality Parameters that need to be met to comply with the Clean Water Act. And one of those is temperature. So that is something that is monitored on regionally through our state departments. In terms of the stream typing itself, the stream definition, that is based on flow sufficient to create the bed and bank characteristics that we all recognize as a stream feature. And protecting seasonal streams as well as perennial and fish-bearing streams on a more equal footing, it's my understanding that the intent there is to maintain those riparian corridors that can keep that microclimate condition in effect, that can keep temperatures down and, and help mitigate climate change stressors on stream temperatures.
Okay, you probably answered my question with that answer. The next question, that if we plan out a subarea, if you're, if you, let's just take an example, we're planning out a subarea, that subarea seems to be coming up through an area which was an NP stream, but it doesn't look like it's being used anymore by the, by the fish. It looks like everything is, it's good that we can use that as it goes and all of those things. If we come to a decision on that, would that, is, would you consider that as a thought, sound decision, or would you say that we are still rolling the dice on that? That's what I'm coming to.
Part of your question, I think, is confusing me a little bit, just because NP stands for non-fish-bearing perennial. So I think you mean type F stream that became a non-fish-bearing stream over time?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I suppose that's, that's probably part of the resiliency approach to regulating all streams regardless of fish presence or absence or those flow dynamics, is to equally protect those areas as they might change with dynamics that occur with climate change. It certainly is possible, you know, if a wetland area is not protected, that's feeding a stream, perennial stream flow, then that could become seasonal stream flow, you know? So the interactions between the groundwater and the surface water can certainly change over time.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, got it. Which basically means that I don't have an easy answer to it, like if I build it, they will come to it. So if I dig it, it's not going to be that they're going to come, come through it, right? Got it, thank you.
Mike?
All right. Here's a question. As I read it, it appeared that there is a requirement to shift towards using the riparian management zones. Is that true? As opposed to just a 150-foot buffer?
Dan, Dan might have some comments on this based on recent discussions with WDFW, but in our recent jurisdictional update, helping others with this 2024 deadline, we've, the preference in many jurisdictions has been to keep a predictive model that is easy for planners and property owners and consultants, you know, everyone to implement and understand. And so that has led to many jurisdictions keeping the current stream typing system and just modifying the buffers to incorporate some of the best available science, not necessarily, you know, at face value, but making some adjustments.
Now, I can add to that a little bit if you'd like.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, I think that Nell made a point earlier about the paradigm shift, and that's coming from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and it changes the way we all think about managing our riparian areas. You know, currently, you know, we know we have streams and we have buffers that protect those streams. And the paradigm shift really is about thinking of them holistically together as one system, the buffer and the, and the stream itself. That is a, it's not a requirement that, you know, the city move in that direction at this point in time, but I think it's important to recognize, and this is some of the reasons that category three components that are listed are somewhat based on, on that, that change in the paradigm shift, moving in that direction. So in the future, down the line, there may be a stronger push to move jurisdictions to that, that type of a system. So it's just kind of important to recognize, it's not required at this point in time, but it is happening. So, you know, does the city want to consider, you know, changing the definition or changing the terminology to be more in line with the way, you know, the best available science is, is being interpreted?
Yeah, that, this is one, as I was thinking about it, is it could get really complicated because knowing 150 feet is pretty darn straightforward. And as I was trying to understand what riparian is, you know, if you've got a sort of a wetland area near a stream, we could be much larger, and if it's a steep bank to the stream, it could be much smaller, right? In terms of the ecosystem that supports that. So this is one area where I'm sure you'll, you know, get more into the details and work through it, but as you do, it would maybe be helpful to understand those trade-offs and be able to explain those to us, and that it looks like this or that in terms of how the code ends up getting or the regulations end up getting written. It could be a challenge, and that's my only comment.
I don't have any questions.
Oh, I don't think, I apologize, I had...
In your presentation, you made the reference about the daylighting. First question to David, do we have any policy and guidelines as far as daylighting?
It's a great question. I'm not, I haven't come across one, but it would be good to have one. So that's a note to the comp plan team to make sure to consider policy language regarding daylight of existing pipe water courses.
It was a big project in Bathville, we had to deal with it. So what is your proposal as far as daylighting? Do we have a potential candidate for daylighting?
Well...
You may want to explain what the daylighting is.
Sure. So daylighting is when you take a stream that has been piped and you convert it back to a natural open channel, ideally with, with some riparian vegetation on either side. So it's, it sounds like your question is a little bit framed from a comprehensive planning perspective in terms of identifying and prioritizing. The context that we're looking at it in is more of potential code update inclusion for the critical areas ordinance. So that would be, you know, there, I found this lacking in some other jurisdictions where this issue has come up, an opportunity to open up a stream, but then the standard buffer width, for example, a type F stream, 150-foot buffer, just for example, could make it infeasible to open up a channel because then you wouldn't have enough sufficient land for, for your current or planned use. So it would be, there's an, I see an opportunity here to incentivize daylighting by maybe adding some clarity in the code about, you know, opportunity to consider non-conforming uses that are existing, or, you know, reducing the buffer beyond what is typically required under that scenario.
Some definitions that I had difficulty to understand. Pipe water courses, what does that mean?
I'm sorry, say one more time.
Piped water course?
Piped water course.
What is that?
So that's, that's a buried pipe that conveys a historic stream flow.
What is the difference between that and a typical stream?
Typical stream would just be open air, open channel.
Okay. And then in category two under the stream summary, you made reference, there's reference to some required restoration and some encouraging. Why we have two different definitions, some of them are required and some of them are encouraging?
Yeah, we probably could have phrased that a little more clearly on the summary sheet, so my apologies there. The distinction is that enhancement is something that is, in our practice, known as a requirement. It's, it's a mitigation requirement under, under the regulations. Whereas restoration is commonly used language for something that's a voluntary action. So there's no impact necessitating mitigation typically for a restoration project, whereas enhancement is mitigation.
Also, reference made to the, again, under category two under the stream, review reasonable use exception criteria. What is exception criteria?
Yeah, so the code currently has a reasonable use exception, which...
What does that mean?
What's that mean?
A reasonable use exception is a way for there to not be a takings claims against the city because the property is so burdened and encumbered by critical areas and their buffers and setbacks that there is no buildable envelope left to construct a house or something on the property. So the reasonable exception, we go back and forth with an applicant, working with their, they provide critical area reports to us, we work with our third-party consultant to figure out the best way to minimize impacts to the site while, while not preventing someone from being able to make use of their property.
Thank you.
All right, as Dan was talking and I looked at the screen, I realized I poorly, poor chair behavior, forgot to ask Hasham if he had any comments last time around. So Hasham, anything on habitat or on streams? And I'm sorry, I missed you.
No, that's okay, Mark. On habitats, the one that was going through my mind, I think it was well-covered. It's about the maps and measurement tools, if we have any measurement tools on how much of these creatures that we love to have them around us are currently here, and how do we measure if we are losing them or if we are inviting more of them, more than what we can afford to have them living among us? For the streams, I don't have any question.
That's a good question. I'm not sure what sort of monitoring data is available on that, but WDFW would be a good starting point to see what resources they have for monitoring your local populations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think there's some reasonable discussion to have about how many more bears we want to invite into Sammamish. I mean, really. By the way, I was going to go back and say, I think that we should suggest to the city's branding folks that we should change the tagline to "Sammamish, we have bogs." Well, hey, somebody was excited about it. The one thing about streams, my one comment about streams is I think as the conversation progresses, this would be a good place to have some visuals because, at least from my point of view, it's easy to think, okay, a fish-bearing stream, more likely a creek in my mind, yeah, we should have extremely strong protections for that. Maybe a non-fish-bearing, but has water in it a lot of the time, could someday have fish, yeah, we should have some pretty good protections for that. A groove in the ground that it's hard to tell whether it's ever got water in it since things have gotten drier or getting drier. I mean, you know, what are we talking about? Is that really what we're talking about, or am I misunderstanding that? We don't need to talk about, get into that right here, but I think some visuals for people to, to kind of think about what that means and where we're devoting our resources to protecting what might be helpful.
I'd like to follow up on regarding streams specifically and all the comments about trying to find the balance between the protections and all the residents who live here, and most of the property along these streams is owned by single-family homeowners. So when we do come back, it, it sounds like it would be helpful for us to be able to provide visuals as well as when we talk about whether it's a riparian management zone or a stream buffer, going with the site-specific potential tree height versus the, did I get the term right?
You're close, site potential tree height.
Okay. Versus our current standard stream typing that we do, is how does it affect the homeowners if we change it? Right now, if, if we have a known stream that's already typed, we can tell someone, this is what we know your buffer is. If there's a stream and we don't know, then they get a certain type of delineation study done, and then we find out. That studies certain things about the property versus the site potential tree height. Is a different type of study that would have to be done, and I am not a botanist ecologist. I have no idea of the work that's entailed with having those different types of reports done, but it's probably something that we could get some rough numbers on so that we would know how much of an impact this would be to homeowners who would need to provide these reports to us.
Yeah, I think with the tree height, one of the thing I did write down, I forgot to mention, it'd be good to understand a little bit more about that because I bet every single one of us has a different picture in our mind of what that means. Like, you know, in a mile-long section, there's no trees growing, but somebody could someday plant something that could grow to, I mean, right, is it that? Or is it you look at what's really there? Or what does it mean so that when we make a decision, a recommendation, a suggestion or a comment, we kind of understand what we're talking about? Is it just existing conditions? Is it potential future conditions? I read an article that we're going to plant redwoods now because the climate's changing and those get to be 300 feet tall.
Giant sequoias everywhere.
Whatever, right? You start to go down a path and that one probably could use a few brackets.
Yeah, it's based on, and site potential tree height, 200 technically, is based on the ideal condition of the dominant tree type that would be reached by the dominant species after 200 years. So it's, it's based on a ideal future condition.
Yeah, go ahead, Sid.
Can I follow up on your question about the, the stream? Do we have some state guidelines as far as quantifying what the stream is? The width, the depth, the, whatever, what are the criteria? Do we have some guidelines?
Well, the Washington State Administrative Code has some guidelines in terms of channel width and gradient for fish presence or absence.
Not amount of water.
But, yeah, nothing quite as detailed as what you're summarizing that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to wetlands, right? Starting again down here to the, to the north, John?
I feel like we've been talking about wetlands and protecting them for quite a while, so I'm a little more comfortable with where this, this is going. Did want to go back very quickly to streams. State Supreme Court required daylighting, changing out culverts and stuff for certain protect... protected species. Does any of that impact Sammamish?
So in my experience as a consultant, projects usually can, need to look at whether they're triggering that requirement if they are modifying or replacing an existing culvert. And in my personal project experience, people are afraid of triggering that requirement and they avoid impacting that culvert at all costs. So I've most commonly seen that, that law implemented on transportation projects.
Yeah, I have only one question on this one. But it was, I, I started off with, with the same premise that the chair had mentioned earlier. Let's assume that I have a home and there is suddenly some water saturation that I'm seeing close to my house, like, or close to my backyard or in this area. And now suddenly, and it's even starting to pool over there. Now suddenly that forms a definition for a wetland, right? According, from here, an area where water saturates the ground, I mean, may even pool at the surface, right? So then I started thinking, oh, where is the boundary? What is the bound, how do, how do I define that bound, the buffer for that? And I went looking for the buffer and I went into the Sammamish Unified Development Code document, but that's a 684 page document. So I'm hoping you'll help me cheat by telling me what is the buffer that we can tell in these cases? You know, where do you, where do we stop?
Yeah, so to start, the definition that's presented here for purposes of discussion is overly simplified. This does not match the legal definition, which is like four times as long. But there are three primary parameters that we look at when we assess presence or absence of wetland. There are certain indicators that need to be present for vegetation, soils, and hydrology. So, so an area that seasonally, you know, gets puddles in your yard is not necessarily going to meet all that criteria. However, it looks like Evril pulled up the buffer, buffer widths under the current code. The buffers are measured from the edge of the delineated wetland boundary, which is determined based on those parameters. And it currently ranges from 215 feet for the highest functioning wetland, which is rare. The, the most common wetland in the landscape is, is probably by definition a category three, which has between a 75 and a 50-foot buffer. And then the lowest functioning wetland, which sometimes a mowed lawn area is actually a good description of areas that commonly meet category four, and that would be a 50-foot buffer under current code.
Got it, thank you. So 50 foot to 215 feet.
Correct.
Depending on where it is, right? Okay, that's fantastic. So if I see habitat surrounding, surrounding that, that expands, right? Then is that a good definition at that point for a wetland? And I'll tell you why I say this thing. There's some years, some years ago, there was a case in the US Supreme Court where wetlands came up and there was a lot of confusion about wetlands. So I, I'm just trying to find out, if somebody wants to buy a piece of land and build a house and it feels like it's going to be wetlands, how do we help advise through the city that this is not the thing to do or that this is okay to do?
We get this question almost every day. When, when we, when we are asked, can I build a house, 10 houses on a property? And we look at the aerial imagery, if we see reflective water with some vegetation around it and it's clearly not a pool, we tell them, you probably have a wetland on your property and you're going to have to hire someone to do a delineation to figure out what type of wetland it is. So this happens very, very often and requires a formal delineation and report submitted to us.
Got it, so there is a process for that. And we can, we can tell them that there is a process, you got to go check, and then the experts will come in and tell that. Fantastic, thank you.
And then they give you a sad face. Can someone move to extend us to nine?
Actually, I'd move to extend to 9:15.
Sure.
A second.
Move the second to extend to 9:15. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those no, thank you. Mike, do you have any comments?
Yeah, of course. But, but brief, this is about cost benefit, and, and there's two related. One, if I read this correctly, it looked like there was some consideration around requirements to re-vegetate wetland buffers. And that feels like that could cost a lot for maybe, you know, questionable benefits. So just check into that and, and make sure that that's clear in terms of when re-vegetation really has significant benefit to the wetlands. And then the other one, which I'll go in the other direction, for bogs, if I understand all of this stuff, just a little bit actually, bogs are really important for flood mitigation and replenishing aquifers. They're, they're really, they're more important than I think most of us think, probably true for wetlands in general. And with climate change, the probabilities of bigger rain events and things like that seems to be playing out. So it might be more important to increase protection for bogs where stormwater can have significant impacts. And I don't know if that's a different designation or anything like that, but just something to consider in terms of how to best manage, you know, runoff from storms and large rain events and so forth. So, so those are my comments. Food for thought.
I have only one question, going back with our chairs. If you have a map of all these 10 bogs, we have 10 bogs in Sammamish, right? Or 12?
Yeah, 12, I think were mapped back in 2004 in the Sammamish, Lake Sammamish Basin Plan.
Okay, cool, thank you. That's all.
Syed?
One question, one comment. Comment is that I could not, for all the things that we talked about, there was a summary of the changes that you guys, you want to kind of propose to the city. For the wetland, there was no summary. Was there any reason or I missed it?
Are you talking about the, the work plan items for category three? Or?
There is no summary per se for the wetland. There are two-page report on their wetland, but there's no summary section.
In the packet?
On page 34, the summary says, summary of critical aquifer recharge area is actually the summary for wetlands.
Oops, thank you.
Couldn't find it. Okay, so my question, do we have different class of wetlands?
Yes, absolutely. And that's, that's really a byproduct of the, the, the way the rating system is structured. It's intended to rank wetlands based on their, how intact or disturbed they are in the various complexity of.
And do we need to kind of elaborate on the different class of wetlands when we're talking about changes that we want to make?
Well, the, the three different options for buffering that are under consideration, all of those take into account the wetland category. So it's definitely at the core of the conversation.
Do we have to call it out and say, okay, wetland class one, class two, class three, whatever?
I think they're currently defined in the code, and I imagine we'll continue that.
The, the different, the categories one, two, three, and four, one being the highest level, they are all defined in the code on page 93 of 684 in, in title 21.
These are category or class of wetland?
We use the term category in the code.
That is the same meaning.
Yes, yes, synonyms.
That's it.
Hasham, any questions about wetlands?
No, I'm good, thank you, Mark.
So the one thing that I made myself a note here, I was thinking about, I'd like to hear about maybe more in the future because it may not be something you can answer right now, but a lot of our comp plan, for better or worse, a lot of our comp plan and our other plans are very dependent on town center. And I'm curious, given the nature of town center and the densities and the way it's kind of proposed to be used, how much the potential for changing these regulations could affect town center versus, I mean, it's a, at least in my mind, it's a different, and maybe you'll say they don't because we have some firewall, I don't know. But it's one thing if we have somebody who wants to build 20 homes, you know, on a piece of property, that's something that we kind of think, focus on and think about. But if this affects what our plans are to hopefully see some of our solution to our housing issues go towards town center, and now all of a sudden we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot, we should be careful about that.
That is something that we are absolutely taking into consideration as we move forward. Generally, we are aware of most of the critical areas that are within and through and around town center, so there already are protections for those in place. If, if there are applicants who are looking to do something in the near future, if they submit an application before January 1st, 2025, they would be vested to the current code today through the review of their project and through the construction. So they, there's that certainty that's in place. But we have all these public hearings so that people can stay aware of all these changes as we move forward.
Okay. Any, I think that's everything. Any final questions or comments?
I have.
John, go ahead.
This kind of goes back to Mike's comments with a step back, and I'm not expecting an answer, and David kind of, I think, touched on this earlier, but as we're putting together all the elements of the comp plan, the critical area stuff creates a bunch of layers and some one-to-one overlap and some not. But think about how the critical area regulations and other regulations, you know, like an aquifer recharge area, impact the maximum lot coverage areas, vis a vis the new state law allowing for more density. So if I've got a single-family lot and I've maxed out everything, how, how is that going to work with the new state law? And that's assuming you're outside the homeowner's covenants restricting that sort of thing. And I think in a previous meeting, someone mentioned that critical areas would take away quite a bit of potential buildable area for the higher density stuff. But just in the general overall package of things, I'm just interested to see how all these pieces are going to come together. And then lastly, this has come up in every one of these topics, are you looking for any sort of recommendation from the planning commission regarding support for additional planning resources, particularly GIS, to keep track of all of this stuff and make some of these reports that show up in applications available generally to the public so that the homeowner down the street can make use of that GeoTech report that his neighbor did and not have to spend another $3,000 or $5,000 on a new one?
Any, any motion that you make where you want to advocate for resources to come our way to help with these things are more than welcome.
Not going to argue that one, right? Okay, anybody else? Hasham, any last thoughts? Nope? Okay, now, Dan, thank you, guys. Don't know if I should look at the screen or look at the table. And Evril, thanks for your support as well. Anything else or should, can we move on? Looks like we're moving on. Okay, the next item on our agenda for this evening is a new business item. It comes from legislation, so Senate Bill 5290 required some streamlining, and we're going to hear about the efforts that have been made to work on streamlining permitting processes.
May I suggest a five-minute break if anyone needs to use the restroom, and then I can get set up?
Five-minute break, so we'll, we will be back at 8:40. Okay, let's, let's go ahead and get started. So we're on to our next new business topic for this evening, which is streamlining administrative updates.
In the spirit of this item, we are going to make it as efficient as possible.
That's awesome.
Yeah. If I can remember how to use my computer. Here we go. So we're here to talk about making some administrative changes to our municipal code because we need to with legislation that has come down from the state. This legislation that we refer to as 5290 was adopted back in July. And so these are, for me, because I geek out on this stuff and I have to implement it, are important points, maybe not as much to you. But please note that building permits were removed from being in this legislation, which is very important because most of our work here is building permits. We have some land use applications, clearly, but a vast majority of our workload are, are simple, simple, sorry, building permit applications. So the city can also exclude some land use applications such as boundary line adjustments, those are pretty straightforward, you're just scooching a property line. Otherwise, if you have something that is a land use application that's an administrative, 65 days of the ball being in the city's court before a decision is made. It's not an approval, it's not a denial, it's a decision, so it could be one or the other. So we're not forced to approve anything if it doesn't conform, but we would have to make a decision, which may, offhand seems like it wouldn't also be fair to the applicant. So if you don't need a public hearing, I'll get there, I see your face, 65 days, if you do need to public notice but no hearing, then the 100 days, if you need a public hearing, you got to go to the hearing examiner, 170 days. If you don't hit these deadlines, you have to refund a portion of the review fees based on how late you are. There's like a, some formula to it. And it also requires new reporting to be done, starting in 2025. I don't have a math degree, so I'm not really sure all the nuances of these reporting information fields that they want. I, I've got like eight more months to get there. Okay. So in order to prepare for these new regulations coming in, we were able to, for free, get the state auditor's office, has a lean services group where someone came in and spent a week with us locked in a room where we workflow diagrammed all of our in, uh, submittal process because the idea is if we can get better applications in, we can review them faster. So we spent a ton of time with color-coded Post-its that made my heart sing, laying out everything and figuring out game plans for how we can provide a better service to the public, how we can provide better public information, and make everything more accessible, which are all things that make me very happy. So with our, with these proposed changes that are in the packet, these are, we really liked the categories that we were going with, with the critical area ordinance update, so I decided to stick those into this update as well. So the first one are things that either are kind of like kicking down from the state through the legislation, or it's a cleanup of old remnant things that are left over from original King County that have been our code since 1999, shouldn't have been there to begin with, and we've just never cleaned up. So we're cleaning house a little bit here. Category two, those are not substantial, they're not going to change a process, but it might warrant some discussion about how much do we want to do? What's the right size for that particular change? And then other things would actually result in a different process. It could result in something that would be of more interest to the public and the residents. And so category three, we would like some more discussion and, and feedback and overall public buy-in on the directions that we want to go. So in the hope of being efficient this evening, you have your packets. I brought- So in the hope of being efficient this evening, you have your packets, I broke this out into the various sections of this chapter of our municipal code, trying to explain what, the general things I'm looking to get cleaned up and things that we want direction on. So there are, I'm, I'm assuming you've all read it three times, you know exactly where I'm going with all of this. So I really want you to focus on the things that we have as category three are related to our noticing processes. Our noticing processes are well beyond what other adjacent cities do, well beyond sort of standard practices, and we don't end up with tons more people attending public hearings or providing public input than other cities that have more normal standard noticing requirements. So these include, we have in our code a long list of things that have to be included in a notice. It's a lot, and it makes the notice very wordy, very dense, no one wants to read it, everyone wants to see pictures. So the idea is that we would simplify the content of a notice, take you to a website, provide a QR code, so you can easily see some pictures, because that's what tells a story more than lots of words on a piece of paper, usually. So that's something that staff would like to do, and we're hoping that you would give us a thumbs up on that. For the noticing radius, we have a thousand-foot noticing radius, and if you are basically along East Lake Sammamish Parkway area and you're within a drainage course, something, 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 you also have to have a 2,000-foot wide column going down to the lake of additional noticing that you have to include for your land use application. We don't end up with more public comment because of this, and it, it feels wasteful, it costs residents more money when they want to do their RUE, when they want to do their zoning variance, whatever it is, we have, most of our land use applications outside of town center are homeowners, or they're just doing like a two-lot short plat, so it's not like big developers who have money to throw around at these things. And it also, by having a smaller radius, you have less chance for error to occur with these things. So simpler noticing, smaller noticing radius, and then our onsite sign notice boards, great tool. It's important to know where things are happening, but they're big, they're very wordy, if we could have something simple where we have, like layout and size can be per, to the description of the director, then we can have something smaller that just flashy, website, QR code, something, so that someone can go see some images. That's what we would love to do, and we feel that that gets people the information that, if they're curious about the site, and you don't have to read this long thing to figure out what's going on. So those are the main things that we'd like you to mull on, and if these sort of changes feel comfortable to you and feel like it's kind of the right direction to go in, that's something that we're going to look at sort of modernizing. And also, right now, we have a lot of risk involved with these very complex noticing requirements require at least a two-week lead time to get a public notice prepared and ready to be sent out by the date of that notice. And if we have a misstep, we have to do a whole new notice again if there's like one thing missing that was otherwise codified. So make it easier for staff, make it easier for the public to consume the information, this is what we're recommending to, to move forward to make this whole thing more efficient. Is there anything within the packet that seemed of interest to any of the commissioners that they would like to talk about or have questions on?
John?
Oh, sorry, sorry, I forgot I had added this slide, for fun, just to keep you on your toes. The other thing that we are considering, that we thought of after everything had been posted, is that final plats, right now, not short plats, so with actual 10 or more, those final plats have to be approved by city council. We have a shot clock that we have to get those done by, and getting them on an agenda in, in time in order to get the council in a timely manner can be challenging, and it doesn't add anything, it doesn't, it's not really a point of adding any value, because staff reviews it for conformance with the regulations anyways, and, and to the conditions of the preliminary approval that would have already occurred. So if it's inconformance, there's no legal reason for a city council to deny the final plat, so it's just like extra process, and we have enough on our city council agendas, it seems silly to make them focus on these things when we need their time spent on other things. So we're also recommending, and the, the state regulations allow ordinance to allow the director to approve these instead of city council. And I think, yes. So, questions and comments, please.
Well, since they're the ones who are going to have the final say, I think they'll have the final say. Okay, John?
So all of your recommendations look really good, and particularly like simplifying the notice signs that include, I mean, the QR codes, you know, popular, but also the permit number or other reference link. Some, more likely, someone's going to take a picture of the sign and then go home, so having both of those, probably a good idea. Quick feedback, you might explain what on and off the clock is and how that works, and do you even have the capability to do it?
We have the manual capability of doing it, given our mildly archaic permitting system, so we do have to like count almost on our hands, since we don't have abacuses in the office. So the shot clock that we are referring to, which is a good question, thank you for bringing that up, is how much time is in the city's court versus as soon as we send corrections or comments back to the applicant, our shot clock stops, so like a chess clock, it stops, it's with them, and then they have their 90 days, we often give extensions because we're so nice, to get revisions back to us, and then they hit the chess clock, they start back up on our end again.
I got to say, overall, I love the fact that we're right in the middle of March Madness, and you use chess as our shot clock reference. That's beautiful. Anything else, John? Ajay?
Thanks, Jeff. So I have just a couple of questions on this. The first question is that you talked about the QR code. Is a QR code just for me to understand what is the land use, or is it that I can give feedback once I get through the QR code? Can I give feedback on that? And is that a legal feedback mechanism?
So my pie in the sky would be to have like a short URL and a QR code that could take you to a webpage where you can see information and you would have the contact for the planner that's assigned, so that you could easily provide that public input, and you would easily have all the things available to you. We have some technological hurdles that we have to overcome in order to make this dream a reality, but I am stubborn, and I'm working really hard with our IT department and with David to help make these things happen. So does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, and if you need help asking the IT person, I can also come in and beg and...
Yeah, if, if I could add to that, so there are certain points in the process where there are notices that go out where there is not opportunity to comment, there are other times when there is opportunity to comment, it really depends on the type of process we're using.
Got it.
So we'd want to be clear.
Got it.
That that is acceptable.
Yeah.
There's other things that I've always loved to use, like tiny URL, that allows you to really shorten the URL down, so that it's something somebody can remember.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it, great, great. My second question was on the third point of your category three, so that just I understand it, the mail noticing radius from thou, from greater than 1,000 feet to under 2,000 feet is now going to be reduced to 500 feet, is that correct?
Five, so we're, we're recommending 500 feet at this point, it's, it's a standard noticing radius for a lot of adjacent cities. I've worked in other jurisdictions where it was medium-sized projects that had a 500-foot radius and small projects had a 300-foot radius, but we do have a lot of like, you know, large lots, and you could have a 300-foot radius where maybe you're only hitting five other properties. So 500 seems like a good standardized distance.
Got it.
And in addition to that, one thing to keep in mind is that our code goes one step farther than the 1,000 feet, so there's this section in the noticing that requires that if you're located in the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay, and you happen to be up high on the hill in that area, and you're proposing a development that requires noticing, we not only have to do 1,000 feet around that, but we have to create a direct downhill trajectory, like if you were to drop a marble and it were to roll right down to the lake, and we have to identify a 1,000-foot wide column all the way down to the lake on either side of that and notice all of those individuals as well. It's quite complex.
Got it, got it, okay, got it. But this 500 feet, you've had some examples with the 500 feet, I mean, you have some, some cities who have done some of this work, and it, it works, it gets people's attention, it's not...
Yes.
It's not distract, it's not, I'm sorry, not distracting, it's not discouraging feedback.
No, and I've done very sort of like anecdotal experiments with public notices. If you have an envelope that's from the city, says public notice, a lot of people don't even open it. If you want a story, I worked with an admin person whose parents were within a noticing radius, and so she like, like wrote out like her nicknames for them on the notice, and they still didn't open it and read it.
Got it.
So, so many cities are going more to postcard-style notices, because then you're not relying on somebody to open it, and it's just, it's more in their face.
Got it.
So, but our current code makes it, you know, nearly impossible to try to cram everything in onto a, a postcard, even if it was a half-sheet size.
Got it, got it. So to go back to what Director Pyle said right now, if it was the way that the marble drops and flows, would that also change to 500 feet?
We would take out the marble, and it would just be 500, and we wouldn't do this downstream column of noticing that's currently in the code.
Got it.
It just makes it way easier, way less brain damage.
Got it, got it, great, thank you. Those are my questions.
Mike?
Yeah, a couple of things, real quick, try to streamline this. I, I really like what you're doing, and I'm glad that the state said you should do it, because, you know, for as much as we place value on our natural environment and the character of Sammamish, a complex process is a backward way to enforce that, as opposed to clarity of what the regulations and codes and all that are, right? So that simplification's awesome, it's in the best interest of the city and the residents. In general, looking through all the changes, they're nice, they're simple, in total, they look like they add up and are impactful. It was unclear what the total reduction would be, like, are you going to make the goals specified by the state? And while I'm at it, there's no reason to not even be shorter than that, because typically shorter processes are actually less costly and, you know, easier to manage overall. So are you going to meet the goals, or is that projected based on the, where the kaizen came out?
So the, the, the kaizen, the overall review process would have been way too much for a three-day conclave kaizen event, so we were just looking at up to the submittal of a complete application, we, that was the goal for, for that workshop.
Okay.
Which doesn't mean we're not going to do more workshops in the future. The, the, we're not looking to change those, those numbers, the 6,500, 170, because Sammamish is so complicated, because we have so many environmental rules, it's really hard to find a property that doesn't have a stream, a wetland, a steep slope, a habitat corridor, a cora, it's most of the city. So that immediately adds a level of complexity, so if we make it less, we'd probably be shooting ourselves in the foot and not being able to have a proper engagement with the applicants. And then also, one thing that was in the consideration is, and, and the state regulations allow this, is that if there's mutual agreement between the city and the applicant to extend that timeline, that's fine. If there's mutual agreement, no problem. And right now, if we're, if there is an exceedance of, of that shot clock, the code requires a notice to be done, a mailed notice and an onsite sign posted on the website, and there's no value to that. The residents are, are happy to know that they're, is there additional comment period? No, we just need more time to review it. So we get feedback that they're happy that we're reviewing it more, and it's not like a, a rubber stamping approval of anything, but that additional extra work, extra expense, extra everything, has no value. So we want to take that out of the code and have something really easy for the applicant to agree with this, and have the applicant agree, have consensus on exceeding if it's appropriate to do so.
All makes sense. Hey, on the notice, interesting quick story, I have a daughter, lives in Berkeley, I think I mentioned it someplace, about how many people they needed to notice, provide notification to. What is posted now for the construction has four bullets, I was like, is that it? It is the simplest thing, I'm like, where are you at? Is it Berkeley? So it can be done, I mean, if they're doing it, we should be able to do something like that. Hey, I have one other quick question. In item D in the listing, neighborhood meetings, if I read it right, it talked about 180 days versus 120, and it was unclear to me how that would be a benefit to go, if I read it right, to, from 120 to 180.
So for an application to be submitted, the applicant has to have done a, a neighborhood meeting, they also have to do a pre-application conference with the city, and so generally, they, they do the pre-application conference with us, and then they do the neighborhood meeting, because they want to get our feedback initially, and then they do the neighborhood feedback. But then depending on all the feedback that they get, we have a lot of people where they say they, they can't do a turnaround fast enough to meet the 120 days.
So that's some feedback from...
Right.
Okay.
And so if, if, as long as the project has remained the same, and it's not a bait and switch, we're fine with having a longer time period for people to make sure they have all their ducks in a row, so they can get their application in.
And they're happy, that's the feedback you're getting from them. Okay, sounds good. Good luck.
Sarah?
Yes. So you said the building permits are removed from the definition of the project permits, so the building permits are still with the old, however long it takes?
So, yeah, so the, the building permits were originally within this legislation, and they don't need a public hearing, and so for someone to submit construction documents for a brand-new two-story home that's on a steep slope, and the city only has 65 days to review it, we were mildly panicked for, for a moment there, but then when we realized that the building permits were, were taken out of the legislation, we all had a collective sigh of relief, and so those will continue along the current process, because there can be so much structural review and so many, you know, you have fire, you have building, you have public works, you have planning, you have all these different entities reviewing to make sure that this home's going to be safe, that those easily take over 165 days.
That's not to say that what's good for the other variety of applications is not also good for the building permits, meaning that we have learned a lot from the kaizen process that applies to building permits also, and we do plan on making some changes to help ensure that applicants are better prepared when they come in the door. If it takes you from this point to this point to get a permit reviewed, we'd like to move it along to this much, so that when they come in the door, it's that much more mature, there are fewer rounds of review that are needed, they know what, what is expected with each submittal item, so there's more clarity in what they provide. That's not to say that not, not, it is to say that not all applicants are created equally. We have some applicants that do a wonderful job, we have others that really don't want a permit, I, you know, if you recall, like I've said before, there's a book called, We Don't Make Widgets, it's a lovely book about local government, and one thing they say in there is the permit mill is the most cursed place to be in the government, because it's a product nobody wants, and they're required to, to obtain.
So what's the usual time it takes for a building permit, like just average?
That's an excellent question. If someone's doing a brand-new two-story home, and, there are so many case studies, brand-new two-story home, but it's on a recently so many case studies, brand-new two-story home, but it's on a recently platted lot so we don't have site constraints to worry about and all of that, then it might be maybe about four to five months from submittal to permit issuance. But that overall time, some of the, sometimes the ball's in our court, sometimes it's in their court. Then there are other homes where if it's a custom home in Inglewood, in Tamarack, or in the middle of a bog, then it can take a year and a half.
Okay.
Because we have the critical air reports and drainage issues and they've got to submit for a public works standards deviation and there's so many things that can happen. So it varies greatly.
Thank you.
Okay, so one question before getting to the notification. Do you guys have a flowchart? So show the process that you go through internally from the time that you receive so you can actually share that with the public, with the developer?
We do have on the website a sort of generalized permitting process. So we have, we have one that's for like building permits. You submit online, you pay your fees, your plans get routed for review, review gets approved, you pay your issuance fees, you get your permit, you start your construction, you get your inspections. So we do have that one flowchart. Then we have another one. Was it specifically for subdivisions?
Subdivisions.
Yeah, where it talks about the noticing process. And that's for a land use process versus a construction review process.
That is between, that is the outside. I was talking about internally. For instance, when a plan is submitted to the city, it goes to the community development. From there goes to public works, fire department, police, different entities, different
So we have SOPs. We don't, we have flowcharts for some things, but we have SOPs that we have written out. We have a whole library of them where, because projects can vary so much, not everything has to go to public works, not everything has to go to fire. So it includes, you know, if there's these things route to this review group, if there's this things route to fire, if they're, to spell out where things get routed to. We have some automation that's configured in our permitting system for the public noticing components and the public comment period. And then at the end for appeal periods and things like that. So because each type of application can be different, it's hard to create a flowchart for every single one of them. Instead, we try to have other tools and systems in place in order to sort of capture the workflow. Does that answer your question?
Right. Okay. So questions about notification. Question number one. Let's say that you have a developer that his or her property is very close to the city limit. Do you still apply that 500 or 1,000 notification and send to the property owners outside the city limit? Is that a safety requirement?
Yes. Yes.
You have to?
Yeah.
Okay. Also, do you have a different notification for different land use? Commercial, residential?
No. The notice is required based on the type of application that it is. Is there anything different for town center?
The only thing different with town center is that there is a required open house that must be held within 14 days of the notice of application being issued. So
And that is only for the
Only for town center.
Do you see something for the new sub-areas that later on is going to
I, you know, I think it would be a good idea when we get to that point. But, you know, an open house is definitely worthwhile when you're looking at a larger-scale project. It gives neighbors and interested parties opportunity to come learn about the project before submitting comment, right? It's helpful to their comment.
Aside from notification of either 500 or 1,000, what is the city's policy as far as notifying organized neighborhood or the gated communities, groups or all that? Do we have some policy in the procedures?
We don't. Our regulations are for, so we have, we have in the code the notice to all property owners within that radius. We do have an agency email list where we do a courtesy email blast where we do, it does include like the school districts and the heritage society and the utilities and all of that. There's, we are working on trying to fix some, we're trying to figure out a way to have some automated email notifications for anyone who wants to sign up. We're going to try to figure out that technology as well because that's an easy way for people who are interested to get all the notices that they want. So we also want to do that.
If I could add one thing to that, it's really important to draw distinction between the part of the noticing process that is, that is codified and required and is part of the process and part of the noticing process where we think it's best practice. So we go above and beyond what our code requires. The challenge with something like doing noticing to homeowners associations or gated communities or other entities is that it's not predictable. And if you were to codify that and require that and there were to be a process error, then that's a point of failure that requires the permit to be redone again and it's a punishment to the applicant. So we would only advise including things that are required process components and are codified for things that we have absolutely assurance that we can nail with precision so that we don't end up with a process error. That, you know, the easiest low-hanging fruit for somebody to appeal a permit is to claim a process error. We see it all the time. So I'm always very cautious about including something in our code that would be something that is an easy process error appeal point because it's hard to nail down. You can get mailing radius labels. You can put a sign in the ground. You can put a notice on the city's website. We're in control of that. What we're not in control of is knowing who all of the HOA contacts are, who that gated community contact is and what their, you know, email is or various things like that. So we're really careful to only put things in that we are absolutely in control of.
Speaking of email, has there been any discussion or any issue at the state level that makes it possible to, instead of placing an ad in a paper and then sending an email as a notification?
So the state has like sort of like best practices for noticing, like include but not limited to publishing in local paper of record, posting at a public place within city hall. Like some city halls have notice boards where they put up all their public notices. So there's like a menu that we can, but that's, it's, those aren't the only things that you have to do. So we aren't required to do publishing in the Seattle Times anymore for regular land use actions. We don't have anything codified regarding emailing. And the state just had it as like an option. So it's allowable, if that answers your question?
I was really surprised. I look at a chart that you compared the notification between among the cities. Kirkland, how can Kirkland get away with it just notified about him property owners?
I, I really don't want to have to ask their city attorney how, I don't know how they explain that.
No challenges?
Maybe we'll find out in the paper one day.
Excuse me. Can someone move to extend the meeting?
I'm there.
Move to extended 9:30. Moved at second to extend to 9:30. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Thank you. Hesham, are you still there and do you have any comments or questions?
I am still here, yes. I was having technical difficulties with the headset and the battery ran low, so I had to switch it. So I hope that you can hear me well. I just want to say thank you for streamlining the processes. This is awesome that you guys are considering streamlining it in a way that helps you process more in a more efficient way without cutting corners. And I'm glad that the state is asking us to do that as well. I support everything that you guys are recommending. The only one that I'm still not so sure about is the one that you were talking about, the 500-foot column and the ball. And if I live downhill, I want to know what's happening uphill. So I'm not very clear about that. If you can just explain it one more time.
So the current regulations are if you are below a project that's within the erosion hazard near sensitive water body, basically the slope that goes down to Lake Subhamish, there would be a line from the site down to the water, 1,000 feet on both sides of that line. And so, yes, we appreciate that there are people who want to be noticed of things, but having it in the code as a codified notice versus having other ways to provide courtesy notices like via email subscription or something like that. We want to make the codified regulations more straightforward, more foolproof, less chance for error, and increase the tools that we have for the courtesy notices. Because sometimes people want to know what's happening totally across town, but they're never going to get a notice in the mail and they may not drive by the site every day. So we feel like there's other ways of getting people better informed without using older technologies or snail mail or any of that.
The QR codes, how safe are those to start scanning QR codes as you are walking around the city? Can they be hacked and they start taking you to different websites or throw some bugs in your phone?
That is an interesting question that I hadn't thought of. So in theory, any sign could be defaced and any sign, we often, always have a website printed out on our onsite boards. No one, that doesn't prevent people from messing and editing those onsite signs already. So it could happen already that we don't know about. And the QR code, I know other cities are doing it. I myself kind of geek out on onsite signs and I take pictures of them all the time. So I personally like being able to just click on the QR code and it takes me to the project website and then I can see all the things because I like looking at all the things. It just makes it easy when you're walking by. But there's nothing that we could prevent from being vandalized, unfortunately.
So, so one, you know, one thing that we could do that I'm thinking about here, so we do have an online map that it works and fits and starts for tracking development. And I've had a vision that if we had the ability to, where you could drop a pin somewhere in the city and you could say, I want to know about all the permit activity within and then set a radius around that pin, you know, whether it be 1,000 feet, two miles, whatever it might be, then it would pull up all of, then you could sort the different types of permits. We're getting close to that ability to do that. So, you know, I, if we were to start to change and streamline the noticing that it goes along with each individual project, I would want to do that in conjunction with improved ability for anybody to access our development permit map and drop a pin or put in their address or, you know, so that they could then know what's going on around them at any time. We also have envisioned that that function would allow you to drop a pin and put your email in and say, I want to be notified of any development permits that come in the door within a radius around that pin. So if we were able to do that, I find that as a far better mechanism to keep people informed who want to be informed about development in this community than putting out a 1,000-foot radius mailer or a four-foot by four-foot sign. You know, it's technology, it's working for us and it allows people to become aware of a lot more than just that one instance of what's happening.
David, is there any city has gone already through that drop pin can of technology?
There have. There are some. I know there was, one of Avril's old neighbors down in California, Redwood City
Yeah.
Did a really good job of that. There were some others as well that, you know, we'd looked at and we're held up by our permit system and the ability of our permit system to play nicely with other platforms.
Which it doesn't.
I have a question on that, David. I've heard this like three or four times that your permit system is bad. Is that the IT system that's really bad? Are we looking into improving that because maybe that'll improve the processes and helps us to streamline it better?
The IT department is putting together their work plan for 2025. And so they've been touching base with all the departments, like what are your pain points, kind of like doing an internal audit of what our technological needs are. And the permitting system is high on the list. Okay. Yeah.
So a couple of really quick comments. I, Hesham actually kind of stole my ideas a little bit, but I will tell you that the QR codes, we deal with this. You got to be careful because people, that's like a target for somebody to tag. And so it can't be a single point of failure that then somebody could say, well, you know, challenge that because that, you just have to make sure that's not the single point of failure. It works really well until it gets covered and then it doesn't work at all. So I also have some concerns given the city's history with people downstream of development. And there's a lot of history that goes with that about eliminating that notification. I don't know. I don't know the nuances of the difficulties, but that feels like maybe you should reconsider that or simplify it somehow with a narrower band or at least look back at the history and understand what's happened in the past to see whether it still fits within the context of that. And lastly, I'd say, yes, I think it's a really good idea if you've learned some things about kaizen and workflow processing to do that on the building codes, or building permits, which are 95% of your work anyway. So if you save 5% on that, everybody's life gets easier, especially yours, right? Anything else from anybody? Thanks, Avril.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to public comment. So this is agenda-related public comment. Anybody in the room want to make agenda-related public comment? Mr. Eastman?
James Eastman, Eastlake, Subhamish Parkway. So I come to these meetings and my head just ends up spinning like there's so much to go over. And I appreciate all the work you guys do, really doing it based off of the whole city. I'm going through this update based off of my property and how it affects me. So it's a little bit selfish. But as you know, I have a docket request in to develop about a quarter of my property with homes and then the other three quarters I'd like to focus on ecotourism. And the three-quarters of land is somewhat encumbered with ecological challenges and a lot of the things that we've talked about tonight affect that land. And it affects it to the point where it almost becomes impossible to try to work my way through it in my head because there's just so much going on there. But I did want to talk to you real briefly, this new site potential tree height, a repair management zone feature, and then work my way back into mitigation, sequencing and no net loss. So I brought my water filters I found at my house to kind of describe here what's going on with this site potential tree height. So essentially, WDFW saying, hey, you have these water filters, the water slowly works their way through the buffers to the center where the stream is. Purifies the water to 95%, pollution removed and puts it out into the lake. That's great. So that would be a 50-foot buffer. This one's a lot bigger. Same thing, maybe this is 100-foot or 200-foot is really a site potential tree height for a dug-for tree. So we're talking about a 50-to-200-foot change potentially. The water slowly goes through at a very low pressure and goes to center and comes on out. And that is general guidance given to the state. As you've already seen in my videos, what we face here in Subhamish is completely different from what the state recommendations is. And that is, these filters are only rated for a couple PSI going through, you know, through the filter medium. Maybe these filters have a trillion-year-old soil Maybe these filters have a trillion-year-old soil in there that is charged so that once the water goes through, it clings to those particles and takes out the phosphorus or the whatever, and it's indefinite source and it never ever needs to be changed out. But if they're only rated to three or five or 10 PSI, and you have a 500-foot tall water tank with a hose connected to the end of it, putting it in at 100 PSI, well, now you're losing all your filter medium going out into the lake. And that's what's happening on that hillside there. It's been documented by WDFW already in prior projects, but that's old science. So either that science needs to be updated, which is, I recommend, is for them to take a look at that. And it's not hard as far as our stormwater mapping. I mean, the stormwater bandit system within the city shows exactly where the outfalls are. And then, you know, all the homes that back up, anything with a backyard lower than the front yard, the water's coming off sheet flowing. So you have all this water coming into these streams. But that's kind of, it's important, but it's important to me for my proposal because I'm setting aside this land for maybe a neighborhood center on the future land use map, but this is going to take a long time to figure out. But I want to get going now on ecotourism on my 75 acres, assuming that there's some sort of mitigation sequencing where, shoot, maybe I can build within a 200-foot stream buffer or 50-foot or even 100-foot or whatever it is. If I'm unconnecting the water tower and taking it out of this filter medium and putting that water into the lake, or maybe I'm creating check dams, just a beautiful stream area for people to come enjoy as part of the ecotourism. Maybe I have all the tree canopy there with birds flying around as part of a wildlife buffer, but yet underneath there's cabins there that are on stilts or whatever where the topsoil's minimally disturbed because I'm leaving all the cars down at the parkway in the parking lot, and people are either walking there or coming up in like a gondola or funicular or whatever. But that would have to be achieved through mitigation sequencing built into the code that allows you to evaluate the whole project and say, man, those six streams are, you know, they have development within them, but, you know, as a whole, in a much better place. And in the critical areas code, it repeatedly says, the goal of the critical areas is no net loss. And that's kind of the same thing in our Shoreline Master Plan is, they preach no net loss of ecological function. Ultimately, I'd like to be able to just look at my whole 75 acres as a whole and just say, hey, let's get no net loss here. Yes, you might have some cabins if that's considered development within these buffers, but in exchange, you can take the city-owned pipes, we'll get it down, maybe we'll treat it, put it in the lake, keep it out of the filter medium, you know, the wildlife buffers, whatever else it might be, trails, connections. But overall, you're achieving no net loss. Like, that vehicle is within our code. So that's really important to me over this next nine months is to make sure that these vehicles are in our code because without them, I just, I can't hold out for years and years on the 20 acres. It's just too long to be holding 100 acres of land when overall, this is much less intense than single-family development because all the cars, the grading, the parking, everything is just in a parking lot right next to the parkway, and this, everything else would be a little intense. So I'd encourage you to spend the time to build some of this in the code. Thank you so much.
Thanks, James. Mary?
Hi again, Mary Victor from Simamish. Just a little history, I started advocating publicly in 2015, and I remember when the 1000, 2000 code was adopted for notifications. It was only done for erosion hazards. So unfortunately, we live in Tamarack, we don't have erosion hazards map, we only have landslide. So houses will get built, we get zero notice. City says we're at the bottom of the hill, supposed to control their stormwater at the top of the hill. Doesn't work that way. City's supposed to review the stormwater code. So you need to be notified when there's stuff. And so Inglewood, I don't know how many lots, but they're 25 feet by 100-foot platted. They weren't supposed to build houses on every one. They have like 647, like build sites that have been built on. Tamarack was 212 lots. So if we came to you and said, hey, we're doing a 6,000 housing development or a 700 housing development or 210 houses, you'd be like, wow, that's a lot of houses. But what they were is they were platted before there was subdivision code. And so they build one at a time. They don't use short plats, they don't do two lots at a time or four lots at a time. They build individually and they don't work together. So you really do need to get noticed. So I would suggest in changing the code, if you look at like Tamarack crosses at least half a mile, if you go to 500 feet, you're down to a tenth of a mile. So you need to make sure that these people are notified. And the erosion hazard near sensitive water body, I don't know if you can see this, is the purple area. So it's pretty much all along the shoulder. So that requirement isn't everywhere. And the reason it was added was there's four salmon streams, Pine Lake Creek, Ebright Creek, Zaccoose Creek, and George Davis Creek that are within one and a quarter miles along East Lake Simamish Parkway. Then there's Tamarack above it, and there's Inglewood above it. It's a very special area of the city. So I'm sure that it is hellacious to get those notices out, but I think you have to look. And if you, if you're going to do it by footage, you should also think of the catchment areas because the people don't need a circle around because the people above them don't really need to hear. But if you have a road 60 feet, 100 feet, 100 feet, next road 60 feet, you're not even going to go a road and a half down in the notification. So the math just doesn't work for me, and I understand the concern and I understand the changes that you want to do. But for those special areas that need special treatment that are really riddled with critical areas, I think you do need to think about that. So I appreciated what our Zoomer here said as well. I want to know if the houses above me are building. Very, very succinct way to say that. On streams, there was really good discussion from now on the different streams and the different suggestions. I'll tell you this, so Barbara Robbie went to over 50 meetings in 2013. She's retired, she's lived in this city, I think, 48 years. And she's kept giving her feedback she never heard. So she lives over by George Davis Creek, and her, one of her letters says, you know, the city just changed at one point by backyard so it had to have 150-foot buffer. There was no fish in the stream, there's no water there most of the year. But because of that, she can't actually do stuff with her trees, and she has trees dying. So she's got a permit, so she'd take them out, put new ones, but there's no way to water them. She's been writing that in since like a long time, and I sent it in on January 18th and I referred to it. No one's ever gotten back, it's never been talked about, urban forestry management plan or anything. The problem is, is if you have a stream, and I don't think you should do the same thing for stuff that will never have fish in it as you do for the things that have fish in it because the fish streams are different. But if it's not connected, you want to make sure that you're not making the buffer bigger because if the buffer's bigger and you can't do anything in it, you literally are going to have blackberries and stuff growing because you're not going to be able to get in there. One of my native plant stewards who I worked with up by Mead School, they live in Shannonwood, they have a native growth protection area. They don't have an HOA or anything, but their native growth protection area, they can't go in, they can't prune dangerous limbs, they can't pull out the blackberry that's growing, they can't plant stuff because it's restricted. So it's really great to have those habitat or riparian areas as they've been talked about. But you want to have a way, you want to be able to have some trails. The city bought 14 acres in Tamarack, I think they want to put trails there one day. I think ecotourism, where you're taking 100 acres and you're only using 25 mostly as a center, I think is a beautiful way to do it. And if you're doing ecotourism and you're not impacting the land and doing cabins, like there's some treehouses in Redmond that are beautiful. I think we need to figure out what are the things that could happen in those areas. And for those areas that are important to the city, how do we give some credence to the HOAs or the local people or for the volunteers to go around and kind of help readdress those areas when they change? Because forests do change over time, but if they're really riddled with blackberries growing, it's really tough. And I became a native plant steward in 2019, 2020, and I did over 250 hours of work. So I've seen the work that they do, I know what the work they do, I know the difference it makes. So when you're thinking about this, you guys had absolutely awesome input, I could tell you read very well, but we just, you can't just pick a number, like pick a number 500 or pick a number that it's this width or this width because you have to say, why are we doing that? What are we getting and how is it going to be protected? I'll give you an example on Zaccoose Creek where it goes out. It's been that way since 1914 because I have that map. One of the houses, when it was built, it was told, oh, that's stormwater, you can just build there. The house on the other side, I don't know when it was built, but in 2005, there was a native plant thing that was done under a conservation easement that they put it in alongside so that the stream could be, you know, habitat and riparian and all that. Well, I don't even think the house sold, the people decided they hated it, so they just ripped it out. So it's like, okay, so we want to do these things, but how do we really take care of them? And I think those really need to be part of the discussion. And I can't, I can't remember the other things I was going to comment on, I had a lot to do today, so only wrote in on the first three of geohazards. But what you're doing is the most important work. You guys are up to the task. You're reading, you're asking good questions, you're trying to do thinking. There are reasons why things were there. And one of the biggest things that we have, so I think James Eastman mentions a six or seven creek on his property. Yeah, they're creeks, yeah, they're ravines. They were maybe carved by glacial activity when there was 6, 8,000 feet of ice and they were carved. So they're not necessarily running streams, they're ravines from the old. And the city has permitted stormwater to dump into those at some point. Maybe there's a stream there, and I've seen some of them, but they're never going to be fish, it's literally a stormwater stream. And there's one by where I live because stormwater had nowhere to go, and it has created a stream that's really stormwater that going on, and there's never going to be fish. And if the, if the stream is there long and if it'll start building a wetland as Ajay was asking about, you just have to be careful of those things. So we need to really look at those as we're going through, and you guys seem really up to the task, so thanks for all your work.
Thanks, Mary. Evan, do we have probably Mr. Stigney online?
Yep. For those who are online and have pre-registered for remote testimony and would like to give a comment, please raise your hand. If you're dialing in by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. Mr. Stigney, I'll go ahead and promote you to panelist.
Hello, planning commissioners. Enjoyed all the conversations tonight, and I think you're, in my opinion, on track with the, with the mix of the natural protection and the urban zone and how do those two interplay? A couple of comments. As I've written in and spoken to several times, in the four-county Puget Sound Regional Council area that we're a part of in King County, 61% of all the land area is resource land. And I'm not making this like a fight or a contest, but humans, zero, wildlife, 100%. So no one lives there. In the rural lands in the four-county area, that's roughly 23% of the land, anecdotally, I would say it's humans 25% and wildlife and trees 75% because the average parcel size is five acres. So what I'm saying is there's a lot of habitat in those two areas. And don't make that think that habitat isn't what people enjoy in Simamish, I'm not saying that. Just recognize the relativity that in urban areas, which is 16% of the land area, how do you mix what's right for human needs? And you know my thing is housing over life and legacy and wildlife. How do we do both? Now, I'll put them at odds, but how do we achieve both? Now, I've often said that as a community, we, the Kings, we should take 5% of our land area and have slightly lesser standards. I'm going to give an example in just a minute. But I'm talking about R8 up to R18 and subareas and neighborhood commercial and town center. That's approximately 5% of the land in the city. Of the 95% of the land that's left, which is basically R1 to R6, I've got a couple questions for context, and maybe that's not the right word, to inform to what degree changes should be made. In the R1 to R6 lands, which is roughly 95% of our city, what percentage of land is available for development in those areas as opposed to already is developed? And if that land were improved or made more stringent, how much of a difference is that based on the remainder? I think that would be really important information to have to sort of gauge to what degree changes made would have any, you know, significant effect as opposed to potential changes to existing housing, et cetera, that, that lives within buffers and so forth. It was talked about the fish and wildlife folks, and I've sat in on meetings and they're very passionate about their environment, and I get that. But I think it would be very interesting to add them to what degree of importance, in their opinion, is these types of standards in resource land, rural land, and urban land. So I'm not challenging, I'm asking. Is urban land really their key issue? So again, I'm not saying no protection, I'm saying what's the magnitude of emphasis for the fish and wildlife on the three categories of land in the four-county area? They talked about today a species list from the WAC, as you well know. The WAC is an administrative code, it's a recommendation, it's not law. Local cities have got, you know, discretion. So I would ask what other peer cities have come up with wildlife lists and what were, were, were on those lists? And in general, I'd be looking at comparing other sort of bedroom community type cities, Mercer Island, Newcastle, potentially Woodinville, although it's getting more urbanized. What have they done with their critical areas when they have sort of similar environments to us as a community? In regards to streams, I do know that stream flows are going down, they are warming up. Fewer streams have fish, fewer streams have year-round flow. I believe that fish and year-round flow should be well-protected, but in the old days, they used to have two terms for non-year-round flow, they used to have intermittent and ephemeral. I like those two categories. Intermittent is part of the year, but ephemeral is a storm event. So I think just weighing to what degree they have water and how much protection those needs is good. I remember the last critical areas update, there was quite a bit of discussion based on category four wetlands. I would go back and relook at that and decide if that guidance made sense or does it need to be made more stringent or not. So anyway, those are just some concepts to throw in for the good of the order, and that's what I have this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else, Evan? Nope. Anything else from staff? David, Evan? No?
Just a quick reminder to make sure you're taking a look at the comprehensive plan and providing comments. We did ask, I guess it would be fair to call it maybe a soft deadline for comments by 8:00 PM on March 24th. It won't be your last opportunity to provide comments, but the ones we have by then we'll be using to help guide the discussion on April 4th, so.
Don't tell me it's a soft deadline because then I'll just put it off. That's the deadline.
For you, it's a deadline.
Good, that's what I need. Anybody else? If not, could somebody move to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
It's been moving a second the way adjourned for this evening. All those papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed no. Thank you, everyone. See you on April 4th.